... meeting of the 2022 meeting of the zoning board of appeals. We are live again, so very happy to see you all in person. So for all of you watching at home, this meeting is being held live and so we're very happy to have a live meeting. With that, would ask that you join me for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for We will be starting the meeting with public hearings. A reminder that applicants, agents, and members of the public speaking other than attorneys will be sworn in, will state their address for the record, and will offer their testimony as it relates to the application before the board. Unless otherwise stated at the end of each hearing, all of these applications will remain open for written comments for all purposes until April 22, 2022. Those comments can be addressed to the board secretary Candace and sent via email, mail, and/or dropped off at town hall. Couple of other things. First is I read the emergency exit procedures, just for people who are here this evening. In case of emergency evacuation, please exit through the rear doors of this room to one of the staircases across the hall and continue downstairs and out through the main entrance. Please do not attempt to use the elevators during an emergency evacuation. In case of a medical emergency, the automated external defibrillator and first aid kit are both located in the hallway on this floor opposite the elevator, and restrooms are located across the hall. Just a few other things. First, if you have your cell phones on you, if you can do us a favor and silence them or turn them off because they interfere with our recording equipment. In addition, if you are inclined to speak to one another in the audience, not when you're appearing before us, if you can do us a favor and go out into the hallway to speak because that also interferes with our recording equipment. And with that, we will start with the -- oh, before adjournments, I have two minutes. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes of our last meeting?
Yes, I move.
Okay, Mr. Tuthill.
Aye.
Mr. Macedonio.
Aye.
Ms. Kern.
Aye.
Joe votes aye. Now we'll go on to adjournments. You ready?
Yeah, sure. Okay, I am three on the agenda. Mark House Developers, 43 Middle Pond Road in Shinnecott Hills, Suffolk County Tax Map 900-234-1-15 is going to be re-advertized for our May 5 meeting.
Okay, no vote on that.
Item seven, which is Sandland Corp., 585 Middle Line Highway in New York, Suffolk County Tax Map 900-23-1-1. This is going to be re-advertized for a final time for our May 5 meeting. Item eight on the agenda, 110 Gaia LLC, 110 Gaia Road in Bridgeham, Suffolk County Tax Map 900-49-1-3.3. That's going to be re-advertized for our April 21 meeting. Let me see something here. Is that what we're doing with eight? Because it continued here and for some reason I have five files.
Yeah, it's just a continuation.
Yeah, I know, it's a continue. I just don't know which date to go with, that's all.
Yep, correct.
All right. Item 10 on the agenda, 40 Ocean View Drive LLC, Shinnecott Hills, Suffolk County Tax Map 900-271-1-44. That's going to be adjourned to our May 19 meeting, this one.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Tuthill.
Aye.
Ms. Kern.
Aye.
Mr. Macedonio.
Aye.
Joe votes aye.
Item nine on the agenda, which is Nicholas and Luz Cardaris, 30 Laurel Lane in Sag Harbor, Suffolk County Tax Map 900-26-1-86. It's going to be adjourned to our May 5 meeting.
Second.
Mr. Tuthill.
Aye.
Ms. Kern.
Aye.
Mr. Macedonio.
Aye.
Joe votes aye.
Did the Ocean View Drive. Now we go to the decision calendar. 95 Inlet Road West LLC in Shinnecott Hills. That decision will be on our -- put off to our April 21 meeting.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
And then Nice Looks Real Estate Holdings Development Corp. and Scott Schlack there. I'll move to put that off to our May 5 meeting.
And these are both final adjournments for May 5?
Yes.
Okay. Do we have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
And then Grant Werner up in Esport there. We'll put that off to our April 21 meeting. That's the motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Okay, I have one other -- a couple more things I have to do, Adam.
Okay, no problem.
All right. It's on the decision calendar?
Mm-hmm.
Determination tonight?
Yep, for both of them.
Okay. Timothy Shannon and Maritz's Manilas. I move to reopen that to accept written submissions.
Second.
Mr. Tuthill.
Aye.
Mr. Macedonio.
Aye.
Ms. Kern.
Aye.
Joe votes aye.
And now I'll move to close it with a determination later this evening.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Okay, Two Tents LLC. I'll move to reopen that to accept written submissions.
Second.
Mr. Tuthill.
Aye.
Ms. Kern.
Aye.
Mr. Macedonio.
Aye.
Joe votes aye.
Okay, now I'll move to close it with a determination later this evening.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Any else?
No.
All right, we can go to the beginning.
All right.
All right, item one on the agenda, and the new applications is Virginia Coughlin, 161 New York Avenue in New York, Suffolk County Tax Map 900-5-3-15. This is Michael's, so you know.
Yep.
Okay. Good luck with it, Adam. Applicant requests relief from Town Code 330-84D, pyramid height, for a total pyramid encroachment in the amount of 848 cubic feet, 424 cubic feet on the west side and the same on the east side, for a proposed two-story dwelling on a non-conforming lot and any other relief necessary.
The board has jurisdiction?
Good evening. Settled, swear in, Daphne, you can state your name and address for the record.
Daphne Vaughn, Surfside Environmental Planning, 225 Montauk Highway, Maritz's, New York.
And do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, or nothing about the truth?
I do.
Thank you. If you can tell us about the application.
Hold on one sec. Let's pass that down, and then I'm going to pass these.
Oh, okay.
That goes in Michael's basket.
Okay.
One of those.
There we go.
You were the Bogrind Candace, were you?
I just brought some photos with me of the existing residence, just for your
Yep. They're all the same?
For your viewing pleasure, yes.
Okay. All right, so we have a couple of them.
Give me one for them.
Sure, there's two over there. Yep. Two more.
So the proposed project includes demolition of the existing residence with the attached garage and construction of a new two-story, single-family residence with a front stoop that will have a one-and-a-half-foot overhang and a rear patio that will be less than 12 inches above grade. The property is located in our 10 zoning district and is non-conforming to the zone at 6,000 square feet, where 10,000 square feet is required. The property currently contains that one-story residence and attached garage that is currently located at its closest point, 4.9 feet from the northern property boundary, and has a pre-existing pyramid encroachment of 968 cubic feet. The property benefits from a pre-existing CO for the residents from June 10, 1965, and an updated CO from June 24, 1997 that reflects the current structures to date. It's been held in single and separate ownership since prior to October 14, 1957. We provided that single and separate search as part of our application. The existing structure is 20 feet from the right-of-way, which it's accessed from off of New York Avenue, which is located to the south of the property. That's the right-of-way is to the west. It's 11.5 feet from the rear yard to the east at its closest point. And the proposed new two-story residence will be centered on the lot from both of the side yards at 15 and a half feet and 26 and a half feet from both the front and rear lot lines. So it will be exceeding the setbacks of the existing non-conforming structures and therefore doesn't require any setback variances. So the only variance that we're seeking at this time is a pyramid variance from 330-84D in the total amount of 848 cubic feet, which is 424 cubic feet on either side of the residence. This is less than the pre-existing non-conforming pyramid of 968 cubic feet. That's
That's it. Have you heard from any of the neighbors?
I have, actually.
Okay.
I've heard from Daniel 70, who is the neighbor to the south. I've had a number of conversations with him. His concern is the location of the generator, which we have on the southern side of the property that is actually underneath the master bedroom window on the first floor and two bedrooms on the second floor of our own house. It will be -- it's in a conforming location, eight feet off the property line, and it will be approximately 80 feet from his house, which fronts on New York Avenue. His concern is that there's other generators that are on the property to the west of him and across the street. And I -- the concern, I guess, is that generators make a lot of noise and tend to go off for testing. I think it's weekly. I've told him that the owner will work with him, and it is required by the code for it to be compliant with for noise mitigation. So we've discussed, you know, doing that, as obviously it's in my client's best interest to mitigate the noise for itself with the generator being located right underneath the bedrooms. I've also spoken today with Jackie Albano, who owns the property across the right-of-way on the waterfront to the northeast.
You cannot, sir, this is a public hearing. I'll let you -- you'll have an opportunity to speak. I'm sorry, go ahead.
She called me to say that she didn't really have any issue with the project itself, but that her concern was more so the tightness of the access to the property because, like I said, this is accessed by a right-of-way that is utilized by a number of properties to gain access. And the concern is construction vehicles, and obviously that's something that would have to be worked out with the general contractor for construction.
Okay.
So I told her that my client would obviously work with them on that.
Yeah, well, whenever possible, and applicants and neighbors can communicate and try to work out their concerns, that's always a good thing, but in any case.
My client, Virginia Coughlin, has not been living in the house. She was a year-round resident until very recently. She had to move out because the house is really not livable. It needs to be repaired, and at this point, there's not really a point in repairing it because they want to reconstruct it. So she's living with either her son or her daughter. Her son is in active military duty right now in South Korea. I did speak with him this morning, which was almost tomorrow for him. And he -- I did voice the concerns of the neighbors that I had spoken with, and he said that they're willing to do everything, you know, to make sure everything is copacetic for the neighbors.
Okay, okay. All right. Minimal pyramid relief.
Yes.
This is an application for minimal pyramid relief. That's basically what it is. And pyramid relief, that in fact is less pyramid relief than the present structure or the former structure had. So it's a reduction. It would be, you know, nice for it to conform to pyramid, but in terms of the amount of pyramid relief that's being requested, it's minor compared to many applications in terms of pyramid relief that we hear. Any other questions, questions of members of the board, Daphne?
Daphne, how wide is the property?
It's 75.
75.
75 by 80, it's a perfect square. Well, not
Almost, yeah.
It's perfect sides, 75, 80, 75, 80.
Okay. And was there a particular design of the house that you -- that the applicant wanted in terms of the -- why it needed pyramid relief? Or is it just because of the size of the lot?
I think that that partially has to do with the gravity feed for the sanitary system. That was the way that it was designed for septic, and that was what was approved by the health department, which they've had that approval since 2019, actually. They've been slow to the draw on getting all these plans completed, I think partially because of the active military duty son who's in and out, and he's been the one working mainly with the architects and me, while his mother, she's an elderly woman, she's not necessarily actively participating in it. She's helping with the plans, but not as active as her son is.
What's the ceiling heights?
Eight feet on first and second floor.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions, members of the board? Katie, Anthony?
Nope.
Okay. Is there anyone from the public? I know you folks are waiting to be heard. This is the application of Coughlin for property located 161 New York Avenue in New York. If you're waiting to be heard, you can either come up to the podium, you can go to the podium, or you can have a seat at the table, whatever you prefer.
Just correction.
Okay, so you can't speak from the audience. I have to swear you in before I give any testimony, okay?
Yes.
All right. Okay, so if you need to state, you have a seat. If you need to
Okay. I'm Carol Ross, and I am the owner of 147 New York Avenue and 151. My daughter is not the owner, only partial.
Okay. And do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, or nothing about the truth?
Yes.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Our biggest concern is that most of the houses there are summer residents, so they have not been notified of this hearing. We live there year-round since COVID, and maybe there are two out of a dozen owners in the area that actually know that this hearing is taking place. Actually, I called my neighbor on the other side, who lives in Brooklyn, to sustain my belief, and she said, no, she hadn't received anything.
God.
Most concerning is that the house is sort of stretched. It's an enormous house for the neighborhood. It's a little neighborhood of bungalows, one-story houses. And this is like a big suburban house compared to everything else in the area. And the road, I mean, we see trucks, like a garbage truck trying to get down that road, and it's really hard. I mean, I don't know where she's going to put all the building equipment or trucks coming for deliveries. If she -- maybe she plans to widen the road or something? I don't know, but it's really
Would you like us to deny the application, then?
For the road?
No, the whole application we'd like to deny.
I think it should be discussed. I don't -- you should deny it now or postpone it.
I'm asking, I'm just asking a question.
I think it should be postponed because the people, it should be postponed till during the summer when people can -- are here, or at least till May.
Okay, okay. Well, I'm going to stop you right there. Let's go through the notices to make sure that -- because we cannot open the public hearing.
Yeah.
Okay? Until we have proof that notices were sent to the list that is provided to the applicant by, I believe it's the tax receiver or the assessor's office, one of those. So let's just go through to make sure that everyone was notified. We wouldn't have jurisdiction if that weren't the case.
But they may be notified that their address here on New York Avenue, but not where they are now.
They are notified of the address that they give to the town of Southampton.
Okay, well, let's, you know, I
No, 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 let's go through it. You're bringing up the issue. Let's just make sure that the recent issue
Katie, so Mike's gone.
I put them back in.
Sure. Okay, let's just go through them, one at a time.
That isn't unusual. You know, people use this as their summer residence. They get their mail at a different place, and so that's the problem.
I think it was here.
They get notified in their, you know, apartment here or the apartment in Brooklyn, and they're out here.
Mm-hmm.
I need the
You need the green, the other words, let's see, probably in the, you know what? I'm going to
While you're waiting, that's why it's so important that when you own a property here that you have your address listed with the town where you want to receive notices and mail, because if you have a local address and you're not here for a great period of time, it's possible that you're going to miss.
Yeah. One went to Floral Park, one went to Sag Harbor, three went to Sag Harbor, so local addresses if they're in the city, and one went to Summit, New Jersey.
And that complies with our town code? That's
I can only tell you about one house, which is, I don't know the number, it's probably 155 or something. They are not notified in Brooklyn, so I can't tell you about the other
Do you know, what's their name? What's their name?
Jen.
So you cannot speak, okay? I'm sorry, you cannot speak to us, okay?
I mean, they
Unless you're sworn in.
They were required to send it to, I think it's you guys, Carol Ross.
Yeah.
Susan Backman.
Yeah, that was Daniel 70 and
Andrew Fedor, F-E-D-O-R. Alex Felix and Marilyn Wykert.
Okay.
So then those are adjoining or directly across, so it doesn't mean the whole neighborhood, you know.
Okay. So what's going to happen, just so you know, is that any of the neighbors who want to submit something in writing are going to have an opportunity to do so.
Mm-hmm.
Okay? This public hearing will, my guess is it's going to be closed, written submissions. They will be able to submit anything they want to in writing up until April 22nd, which is a few, one and two weeks from now. Two weeks and a day. So absolutely feel free to have them submit anything they'd like to submit, anything they'd like to tell us, pictures, letters, whatever they'd like.
I'll find contact with people who are, you know, I'll ask around, see who hasn't been informed.
Who are you talking about?
My glasses, I'm totally here, though.
Because we notified this person, this person, this person, and
Well, and
This is me here. This is my second house, and this is the one that's not been notified here.
We didn't have to notify them.
The town provides the list as to who's
Excuse me.
So we have jurisdiction. My understanding is we couldn't be having this public hearing if there wasn't satisfactory proof. That's when you heard our attorney say, we have jurisdiction, that meant that there was proof that the mailings went out. It doesn't mean that they receive them if they have multiple homes.
Well, like I said, I'll see what I can do about finding out if those people with multiple homes have gotten the papers in their winter homes.
Yep. Well, they're not, the applicant is not required to have proof that they received the papers. The applicant is required to prove that they mailed them to the address provided to the town of Southampton.
But they have to receive them in order to make a comment.
You know, this is an issue having to do with jurisdiction of our board. Feel free, you can be unhappy with the process, but that is what the process is.
But let them know, and they have, you know, they'll at least have two weeks to submit written submissions.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. I'm not going to force them to do it. If they have no problem with it, they won't have, you know. Anyway, thank you for the opportunity to express my opinion.
Okay, no problem. Thank you. Thank you for coming up.
Daphne, how big is the house?
The footprint
I know it's three bedrooms, but
Yeah, the footprint is 1188 square feet.
Adam, you want to go with Marjorie's comments?
Sure. So did you, I don't know, did you see the comments on the billing department that we got?
Yes, and we, oh, actually, yes. I did have multiple discussions with Marjorie Riley regarding that, the clarification on the site plan.
Excuse me, folks, if you want to speak, you'll have to go in the hallway, okay? Thank you.
She had asked for clarification. I think we were showing multiple setbacks as far as pre-existing non-conforming and then the 30-foot that would be normally for our 10. So we basically cleaned it up, and we resubmitted those yesterday for her review. So hopefully those will satisfy her.
Okay. Well, just double-check with her.
I think, I think we're okay.
What was the total square footage of the residence? She said 11
The footprint's 1188, and then there's a second floor, which is slightly less, I believe.
What's the footprint now, square footage?
Um, that's a great question. Let's see if the survey will tell me this.
My guess is the current, the new house is bigger than the old one.
It's bigger.
Yeah.
It's just
Right, right.
Yeah, I don't know. Hold on, wait a second. I should have that because of lot coverage.
And you can submit to us in writing, Daphne, if you want to.
It's 1178, actually. So it's really not that bigger. It's just reorganized.
That's the entire house, 1178.
Yes, it's just one story, and it's partial garage right now. So there's no garage on this new house.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
It's two stories, Daphne.
The new house does, yes.
Okay.
All right, Mike.
Yeah, any other questions? If not, Mike, it's yours.
Okay, we will close this public hearing, leaving it open for written submissions until April 22nd with a determination on May 15th.
5th.
5th.
May 5th.
May 5th.
May 5.
Single demand.
Sorry, I wrote the number down wrong.
We're all rusty, we're not used to being here in person.
I wanted to give you extra time, but you know, no, I wrote the number down wrong. May 5th.
Okay.
Written determination, April 22nd, decision, May 5th.
May 5th, okay. Do we have a second on that motion? We do. Okay, Mr. Daley.
Aye.
Ms. Kern.
Aye.
Mr. Tuthill.
Aye.
Mr. Macedonio.
Aye.
Joe votes aye. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, have a good night. Appreciate you being here.
All right, item two on the agenda is 153 Harriks LLC, 24 Moon Avenue in Flanders, Suffolk County Tax Map 900-123-3-36. Applicant requests relief from the following provisions of the town code for a proposed two-story dwelling on a non-conforming lot. 330-84D pyramid height for a pyramid encroachment of 3,520 cubic feet, 1,760 cubic feet at each side, and 330-11 Residence District's Table of Dimensional Regulations for a total lot coverage of 29%, where 20% maximum is permitted and any other relief necessary.
The board has jurisdiction? This is for
Good evening. I just have to swear you in unless you're an attorney.
No.
Okay, if you can just state your name and address.
Monica Majewski, 30 Stoller Drive, East Quad, New York, 1192.
And do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, or nothing about the truth?
I do.
Thank you. Tell us about the application.
So I'm on behalf, I'm here on behalf of the owner of 24 Moon Avenue in Flanders. This is a residential empty lot of 6,000 square feet in our 10 zoning. We're here tonight to ask for two variances. I just realized it's three because the lot is undersized, so proposed lot coverage of 29%, where 20 is required. And we're asking for pyramid relief of 3,510 cubic feet, which is 1,760 cubic feet on each side. Otherwise, we're able to meet all the setbacks required for the front side and rear yard setbacks in the our 10 zoning. We are proposing a two-story, one-dwelling house with 2,400 square feet of living area. This undersized lot is typical for Flanders. Everything around, it's pretty much similar size. And just a few months ago, there were three applications for Flanders with lots of the same 5,000, 6,000 square feet. It was 747, 749 Flanders Road, and 12 Baby Avenue with similar-sized lots. And they did receive their approval from the board. The house we're proposing will be similar in construction as the nearby dwellings. The lot was single and separate since 1945. I don't know if you've seen the letter from building department. There was a question about us looking at the single and separate.
Yep.
So the beginning of the letter states that that this lot was single and separate since 1945. And whatever Marjorie quoted was the second part of the letter. But when I looked at the single and separate, and I determined that there was a partial joint ownership at some point with the Dacken family up until, so 1970, 1979, Constance Dacken was owned by her purpose partially with her husband that passed away. And in 2021, 32 Moon Avenue was sold to someone else. So as of right now, it's single and separate, has two different tax maps. It had two different tax maps, but now it's two different owners, two different addresses. I even pulled out the tax bills, I don't know if you've worn them.
Did you look at that?
You can submit them if you'd like.
Did you look at it, Adam, the single and separate search?
You know, I did.
You did or you did not?
I did, I did, and I thought that there might be an issue, so.
Yeah, but Monica, you saw common ownership up until 2021? No, right? I only saw it for the one period after someone's death.
I know that 32 Moon was sold last year.
Okay.
So that's when someone else become the owner of 32, which is the lot next door.
Okay.
Well, you can go through this, and I'm just gonna confirm it, because what I saw was only a period of ownership, common ownership pursuant to a death, and the town code does allow you to have three years of common ownership.
Right.
So you, you know, you can go through the fact pattern anyway.
Yeah, we'll go through it anyway. So in terms of the single and separate status, it may be that the single and separate search that you submitted is satisfactory, but if there wasn't a period of common ownership that isn't covered by the town in terms of, based on a death, then the analysis that we have to do is to make sure that there wasn't an intent on the part of the owner or prior owner to merge this parcel with adjacent, any of the adjacent lots, particularly the adjacent lot that is alleged to have been merged with.
Okay.
And so I believe this is, well, this is vacant land. There aren't any structures on this property, and have not been structures on this property, I guess to the best of your knowledge. Does it have a separate deed? Was it ever in a deed with another, with another property?
Separate deed, separate address, separate tax bill.
Separate tax, separate tax rap member?
Yes.
Okay.
Ever a mortgage on it?
Can't imagine there would be if it was vacant land.
Yes.
I mean, you can ask the question, but... Are you aware that there was ever a mortgage on it?
Mortgage on it, no.
Yeah, I wouldn't think so. Okay, so pretty much unless there is an intent based on the history of the deeds or the use of the property, no legal merger would have occurred.
So right now, the two addresses are owned by different people.
Yeah.
So that's, that, I mean, makes any difference that there are different owners right now?
Well, a little, a little bit, but mainly we look at that, that common ownership period. But it does matter what happens subsequently. But it does, at least if it's vacant land and there isn't any intent to have merged the lots through a structure on the property or the deed history, then we'll deem it not to have been, we'll deem it to be a single and separate lot. So that's the reason Marjorie had asked us to kind of go through the analysis in case the single and separate doesn't cover the issue in its entirety. So that's that part of it, and I know you went over, well, maybe you wanna talk a little bit more about the other relief. I know you went over it. So the lot coverage, I just wanna mention, it is unusual for us to have lot coverage relief for a house on a lot. Typically, when we have lot coverage relief, we'll have lot coverage, usually it's rear yard lot coverage for an accessory structure, like a pool or more commonly a tennis court, usually a tennis court. But in any case, it's a little unusual for us to have it for the primary structure.
Are you talking about the pyramid, really?
No, talking about the lot coverage relief.
Oh, okay. Well, the lot is, you know, 6,000 square feet to put something on there, but we are meeting the setbacks.
Okay.
So there was no way to put a two-family house there, I mean, two-family house, two-story house there with not having, since you cannot have basement.
Yeah.
This is, you know, Flanders.
And in terms of the size of the houses, it's similar, is what's being proposed similar in size to
Yeah, it's modest. Four bedrooms, one car garage, nothing crazy.
Okay, okay.
But you have the, you have what else?
Right, right, okay. And then just going over the pyramid relief, so if you can just tell us a little bit about, pretty much that request, which I know you went over at the outset.
I know there were some issues with calculating. The architect revised the paperwork, I know they were submitted. So we have 10 feet on each side and two, as you can see, I know he's holding the photo.
Yes, no, we have, we have the diagram, yeah, so it kinda, kinda shows what it is.
Right.
Yeah, yeah.
The garage is built into the lower left of the house.
Are they mostly two-story houses in the vicinity?
There's like one and a half story, there's some two, it depends where you go. I drove around and I definitely saw houses like outside, and it's not gonna stick out or anything.
Okay.
What's the height of the floors?
Uh, 8 feet.
Eight, it says here, I think, 8'5". What did it say? 8'4". Finished first floor, elevation 8'4", is that?
That's the pyramid when he was-
Yeah, I'm talking about the pyramid.
Yeah, 8'4".
8'4", and what's the size, what's the height of the second floor?
Yeah, I mean, 3,500 feels like a lot for a, for a .148 lot, to me. But, so we're trying to ask you, I think, is, is there any ways that you can mitigate that? Can you reduce that by lowering your ceilings or, you know, making some adjustments to the house?
I have the owner here, do you mind if he steps up?
Sure.
If you'd like.
Is this his house?
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay.
Swear a minute.
Just have to swear you in. Okay, just state your name and address.
Adrian Conyor, 87 Sandy Court, Riverhead, 11901.
And do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, or nothing about the truth?
Yes.
Okay, so, yeah, so we just had, I guess, questions about the pyramid relief, and whether it's possible to change what's being proposed in terms of the house to reduce the amount of pyramid relief, which, which would involve changing the design a little bit in all likelihood. I don't know how high the ceilings are, but that's one thing we often ask.
8 foot ceiling, 4 foot ceiling.
That's what we have, 8.
Yeah, 8 foot and 4 foot and 8 foot and 2.
So I'm not sure what the calculation says, 8'4".
I didn't hear what you guys said.
8.
8, 8 on both floors?
Yeah. Yes.
Anthony, is the microphone, is it getting everything?
As far as I could tell.
Okay. Just 'cause normally we hear like, I don't know, it seems like, I don't know, I guess it's-
I think they were speaking to each other, and then the paper went up.
Okay, okay.
How much was the second floor?
It's 8 feet, but-
No, like, the first floor, including garage, oh, I see.
Okay.
Yeah, including garage is like 2,600 square feet.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm, okay. And this house is built, being built at ground level, it's not being, you know, it's not in a flood zone, you're not, it's not, not an elevated house, correct?
No, it's not.
Yeah, yeah, okay, okay, well.
What's the total height of the house? Do you have that?
28, 28 feet.
The challenge is you have a small lot.
Mm-hmm.
You know, and you're one of-
But they're all small.
Yeah, well, not, not, there's actually, there's, you know, a couple of them behind you are small, but the ones to the right and the left are, appear to be larger. You know, your house is gonna be bigger than some of your neighbor's houses on a smaller lot, so that is what causes some of this pressure.
Yeah, the one thing that's really unusual, I'm not quite understanding why total, we need that, that it's kicking in total lot coverage. That confuses me a little bit, but anyway, we don't normally have that.
Well, I guess with 6,000 square feet, if you're looking at 1,200 square feet of footprint, it would give you the 20%.
Right.
Right, so I don't know how much goes there, but-
Yeah, 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 it's just a little unusual.
So where does the 29 come in? If it's 34 by 40, that's 1,200.
Yeah, they would just have to build a small house.
It's 40 by 34, yes.
Yeah, this is a four-bedroom house, fairly modest on a very small lot. So I think that's what is the issue. So the only way it could be reduced, both the pyramid and the lot coverage, is if the house were reduced in size and design in terms of, in terms of pyramid relief. But that having been said, I also have to say that it is 3,500, it's not, you know, 13,000 cubic feet of pyramid relief. It's not nothing, but it's, an argument could be made either way as to whether it would have an impact on the neighbors. But we'll see. Have you heard from any of the neighbors?
No.
Have you?
No.
We'll find out momentarily. Any other, any questions, members of the board? Katie?
No.
Anthony? No? Okay. All right, is there anyone from the public who's waiting to be heard this evening in connection with the application of 153 Harriks LLC? This is for property located at 24 Moon Avenue in Flanders? Okay, if not, I have a lead. So the way in which we've left this, I'm not exactly sure where board members are in terms of the pyramid relief. It sounded to me like, Susan and Mike, you are not happy with that.
I would like to see if there's some reduction available, but I'm not sure I'd be a negative vote if there weren't. But I would welcome some reconsideration in terms of the pyramid relief.
But what are you proposing is like-
Either lowering the ceilings.
On the second floor?
Yeah.
We're reducing the size of the house.
We're reducing the size of the house.
And in order for this board to act, we, there have to be four votes. One board member's not here this evening.
Two.
Oh, and that's right, two, two are not here this evening. So, so it's up to you. I mean, we could have you come, come back and you could see what could be done to reduce the, the relief that's being requested, or you could, you are entitled to leave the application as it is.
Roll the dice.
Yeah. So it's up to you.
How does the rest of the board feel?
I'm all right with it.
I'm okay with it.
You know, it's a constrained lot, too, you know?
I don't think reducing the size of the house can reduce-
I mean, we tried to make it the smallest, nothing.
8-foot ceilings, what are you doing?
They're not 10-foot ceilings.
Then the staircase is too small, too close, and...
Yeah, well, I have, I'm listening to, you know, Mike and Susan's concerns. I'm not exactly sure where, where I would be on this, but it's up to you, whether you wanna just leave it the way it is or consider changing, changing the relief, that is, changing the, what's being proposed in terms of the house.
Can we go less than 8-foot ceiling? I mean, are you even allowed to have less than 8-foot ceilings on the second floor?
I don't think so either, but I don't know that for sure.
Yeah, yeah.
It's probably the size more, the size of the house probably more than that.
Or like the second story, you know, does the second, does the second floor fill up? Is it right on top of the first floor, or is it?
Yeah.
How many square feet is it gonna be when you're done?
You said like 2,400?
2,400 with the garage, so probably like 2,100.
With the garage.
Living space, 2,050, living space.
Have you considered a design that, that doesn't have the full... You know, just asking if-
Yeah, I guess we can talk to our architect. I think that, that, yeah, that we can, we can, we can, we can-
Does it make sense for you to kind of come back in two weeks, having discussed it with them and leave it open?
We don't have any room on the agenda in two weeks.
Oh, we don't? All right, so when is the next?
May 5th.
May 5th?
Yep. Yeah.
I don't know, I mean-
I mean, we have nine, but it's one of them is 7/11, so I'm not-
Oh, yeah, right.
So we have 11 then?
Yeah, yeah.
Anyhow, I'm not totally opposed to this, but I would, but I would really welcome some reconsideration of the size, just to see if you can moderate it in some way. I haven't made up my mind, you know, one way or the other, but-
And if you do consider that, you could send that in as a written submission to the board, known in the next couple of weeks. Or just say, as is-
Or just say that you don't wanna do that and, you know, come and-
Yeah, so it's really up to you how you wanna proceed tonight.
So do you vote tonight?
No.
Well, we're not voting regardless, yeah, yeah.
And we do accept written submissions for, you know, in two weeks, and then with a final vote on the 5th of May.
Yeah, so the question, so if you wanna come back, we can have you come back on May 5th. Or you can leave it the way it is and see what happens with the vote.
Or submit information and then-
Yeah, if you want, if you wanna get rid of some of the cubic feet, if you can, you can do it in a written submission.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so let's come back on the 5th, I guess.
You wanna come back, or you just wanna submit written comments, and then we will vote on the 5th? Which one do you wanna do? Do you wanna actually come physically back?
I don't wanna take up all your time, but I feel like we should leave at this. And, you know, we're gonna try working the architect and see if we can-
Okay. All right, that sounds good.
Maybe we can change the shape of the roof or something, or that's, that's kind of what you-
Also, Monica, take a look at those other variances that you mentioned. I think those were for the housing authority, so see if any of those had pyramid encroachments or, you know, I don't, I don't remember.
Yeah, 12 Baby Avenue did.
I know, but that's what I'm saying, that would be, that would be persuasive, too, if it was similar.
And it was pretty much the same, and even smaller lot, because it was only 5,000 square feet.
Okay, so do you wanna come back? Is that we, or?
Or do you wanna submit?
I just feel like this type of houses get approved, you know, all the time.
Okay, so you don't wanna come back? That's fair.
We can speak with an architect, but I just, I don't know, I feel like-
Speak with the architect, if you guys can lower the amount of cubic feet.
Submit it.
Just submit it to us, in a written submission.
By April 22nd.
All right, Adam, go ahead, baby. Where we going?
Okay, so I'm gonna make a motion that we close the application for 153 Harriks LLC, except for written submissions. The deadline for written submissions is end of business on April 22nd, and I will have a decision ready at our May 5th meeting.
Second.
Mr. Tudhill.
Aye.
Mr. Macedonio.
Aye.
Mr. Daley.
Aye.
Ms. Kern.
Aye.
Chivotai, thank you both for being here.
Copy what you need.
Thanks.
Candace is not here tonight, so maybe give her a call in the morning.
Thank you very much.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Yeah. All right, next on the agenda is going to be Sky Hampton LLC. 200 North McGee Street in Tuckahoe, Suffolk County tax map 900-129-2-17.1. Applicant request for relief from the following provisions of the town code for a proposed two-lot subdivision. One, for a proposed lot, 1, 330-11 Residential District's Table of Dimensional Regulations for a proposed lot width of 129.73 feet, where 150 feet is required. And 330-77D placement of accessory buildings, structures, and uses in residence districts for a rear yard coverage of 23.6 feet, uh, excuse me, 23.6% where a maximum of 20% is permitted. And two, for proposed lot two, 330-11 for a proposed lot width of 144.73 feet, where 150 feet is required. And 330-82 lot width for a proposed flagpole width of 15.64 feet, where a minimum of 20 feet is required, and any other relief necessary.
The board has jurisdiction.
I just have to swear you in unless you're an attorney?
I'm not.
Okay, you can just state your name and address.
Elizabeth Roy, 200 North McGee Street, Southampton, New York, 11901.
And do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, or nothing about the truth?
I do.
Thank you, then tell us about the application.
Sure. I have embarked on a two-lot subdivision of this piece of property, which I acquired just shy of two years ago. I have been, I've received preliminary approval from the, from the initial submission for the subdivision. What is currently on the property was constructed somewhere around 25 years ago. It is a two-story, single-family residence of 3,200 square feet, a garage with carport, a pool. And in the rear of the property is a structure known as a potting shed, which is 864 square feet.
What was that called, a putting?
Potting shed. The agenda is to divide the property into roughly two equally-sized lots due to making them well-shaped. Matt Tarters had suggested the layout, which currently appears on the survey, in spite of the fact that there is a little bit more square footage on one than the other. This is an R40 zoning, and we do have an excess of 80,000 square feet here. There is a proposed 15-foot-wide flagpole to accommodate access to the rear property. And we are requesting relief on account of the 15-foot width, which provides for 15.6 feet of footage on North McGee Street, and then minor variances as well for the width of the front property, and then the rear property as well, from the 150-foot requirement by the town. So that is an overview of the property.[1729.02] the town. So, that is an overview of the property. Happy to take questions.
So, we got a letter from the neighbor. So, apparently, according to this letter, there's litigation going on. That's what the letter says? Related to, I don't know, it's a right-of-way or common driveway?
Yes. So, the neighbor pushed back against signing a common driveway easement. So, there is a common driveway that's been in use for 25 years. It preexists for purchase of the property. She purchased her property in 2017. The driveway is very clearly there from Google Earth Maps and whatever other Earth vision you have from well before that. However, since the neighbor was so opposed to doing this common driveway easement, we did move the flagpole entirely onto my property. So, she seems to either be misinformed or not able to read the placement of the flagpole, but at this point in time, it is entirely on my property.
Okay.
So, it does not involve her at all.
Well, I only ask the question because if it was partly on her property, and there was litigation, and it turns out that that, you know, went one way or the other way, it would impact what we would decide.
Understood, and it is not.
Can I just try, and so you have this, if you look at this aerial, currently, the driveway traverses both properties, right? So, understand that, that, you know, that currently, that applicant here is accessing from this driveway, it's the same driveway that her neighbor is accessing from, and it both traverses both of their properties right now. I believe her objection was, it was addressing it during the subdivision. What we did was, we did a flagpole that would serve both of these lots as part of the subdivision. How we're going to deal with the existing driveway, whether or not we could force her to relocate, you know, I don't know yet. And so, to clarify and to understand, we did a pre-application on this. There's no really preliminary approval, so we just adopted a pre-application report that identified the issues. So, from a legal standpoint, I have no idea whether or not this involves, or should involve, the zoning board determinations as it relates to this, but it is, we are aware of it in planning, and should the subdivision go forward, it'll have to be resolved before we can stamp approve a map anyway.
What specifically has to be resolved is on my property completely?
Your driveway, right, but currently, the driveway that she uses to get to her house...
She's using my driveway. If you see that, there's only about five feet of driveway that she has access onto North McGee Street. She's predominantly using my land to access her property in that front piece, and then it arcs around, and it moves to about 10 feet on her property and 10 feet on my property, and then it arcs back to my property.
If you go back, like I said, it's an issue needs to be done prior to either one of these people buying the property. As you could see, the properties were illegally being used for all sorts of stuff going on. And there was one driveway serving both properties at that time. So, I'm not saying it's necessarily the issue. I'm not saying you didn't resolve it by putting the flag strip in your property, put the driveway there, but as far as I could see, and as far as I was able to read from the original review, right now, the driveway that she uses, it goes over your property. So, I, from a legal standpoint, I just want to make sure that we could tell her to stop and relocate her driveway, because you're going to then redesign your driveway to serve both lots, I'm assuming.
Well, I don't think it's going to be a matter of telling her to stop. My understanding, as you're saying it, is that your lot, you know, if she gets the variances for this, she'll have a 15-foot flagpole that will serve both of her proposed lot one and lot two, and that if she wanted to, she could probably put up a fence, and she would, you know, all along her property line and still be able to access it.
Absolutely.
Right? I mean, that's...
And I'm not saying that's an act, from a legal standpoint, I have no idea.
Thank you for...
And this dispute in the Supreme Court is, other than the things that we're talking about, is a matter between you and your neighbor. It's not something that...
Has it been canceled, or is it still ongoing?
It's not canceled, per se. I mean, there is a prescriptive easement due to the fact that this road has been in use for 25 years, and New York State law is 10 years. However, at this point, since I'm able to come up with a plan that does not involve her property, I don't see any reason at this point to continue to pursue the lawsuit.
So, this survey that we received, where we see the proposed driveway, the 15.54 foot, all of that is on your property?
That's correct.
Okay. Okay. And then there's a strip on the side, that's the strip we're talking about, that belongs to her?
This strip just delineates where the driveway is today, but it has nothing to actually do with the property.
And how are you going to define your own space in this? Were you going to put up a fence? Or, you know, how are you going to deal with it?
I think the easiest way is with foliage, so I'll probably put a line of trees to create a privacy hedge as well.
Of the emergency services, are you happy with that?
We normally ask for a letter, a letter to make sure that ambulance is, and...
They may be required by the planning board to have the 15-foot flag strip, and then put in an additional five feet on the front lot easement to compensate for that.
Yeah, I believe that that was, yeah. I think that actually is in there as well. There is a five-foot easement in there to accommodate the emergency vehicles.
Yeah, okay. So, separating it apart from the issue that we went over with the neighbor...
My lovely neighbor, yes.
The underlying relief is for, you know, lot width 150 feet to 129.73 feet for lot one, proposed lot one, rear yard lot coverage 20 percent to 23.6 percent, and for proposed lot two, lot width 150 feet to 144.73 feet, and lot width for the flagpole, 20 feet to 15.64, which is what you just mentioned, that in reality, we're going to have it be 20 feet, even though the variance is being requested. So, in the scheme of things, this is not significant relief from my perspective. Yeah. And as far as the underlying subdivision, which is going to be before the planning board, you know, what I typically do, not to substitute for the planning board, but just to take a look to see what's being proposed is, in terms of lot size, is similar to other lots in the vicinity. And it appears that across the street and a couple of lots down, there are smaller lots that would be fairly similar to what's being proposed in this two-lot subdivision. In addition, there are currently two structures, two...
There are three structures on the property.
Three structures on the property.
Except for the garage.
So, one could also make the argument that subdividing this property makes it more conforming in a way.
I believe it does.
Yeah.
Well, but they're not CO'd for houses, though.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, you know...
The potting shed does not have a CO today.
No, that's what I'm saying. So, it doesn't, it's not a move towards conformity in terms of density.
Yeah, it's not, right.
Normally, if we saw two houses, we'd be like, oh, the density is there.
Yeah.
So, it's not that the density is there.
Right.
It may be used that way, or maybe historically was used that way.
Right. Yes.
Okay.
But they're pretty close to conforming sizes.
Yes, yeah.
And then the only other issue that I might possess, if you know, to discuss real quick, because it pops up on these subdivisions, is about this provision about the TDR and Pine Barrens credits for creating undersized lots, that, you know, the applicant would have to demonstrate that they've exhausted that opportunity, but it does note some exemptions here. So, I want to be clear, so we could distinguish between other cases, in case anybody's watching, the audience, but lots which we're requesting minor area or lot width relief would be exempt from that provision. And in this case, the lot width relief that they're asking falls under that 20 percent threshold. It would be considered minor relief in that case. So, they wouldn't be subject to the TDR. So, I just wanted to make sure that was on the record.
Yeah, okay, okay. Very good. I had one other question. Have you heard from, other than this neighbor who wrote the letter, is there anybody else amongst your neighbors who you had contact with at all?
The Deers have not contacted me.
Okay, okay. Yes, yes. I see there's a lot, yeah, to the, I guess it's to the, is it to the east?
Yes, we have the preserve behind us, the water plant below us, and I guess across the street, they're in some construction, so no one else has commented.
Okay. And just for the, kind of for the board, the neighbor that, you know, that is unhappy wants us to keep the application open for her to come on another day. My inclination, under this set of circumstances, is to have her submit whatever she would want to submit in writing, but that's just me. But if board members want to, you know, hold it open, well, that's something I suppose we could do if we wanted to. Any other questions?
I have one more question.
Yep.
Because I'm just noticing it now. For, on the proposed lot two, is that, is that structure on there the shed, potting shed, or is that...
It is.
That is. Okay, well, that, I mean, it says on here, existing one-story frame dwelling, right? That's what we're talking about? Okay, well, that should definitely be changed, because that doesn't have a CO for a house.
And that's why I thought it was more...
I know, well, that's, even as you said that...
The property historically has had multiple dwellings on it. I have no idea why the previous owner named it a potting shed, since it has Suffolk County Health Approval, Electrical, Plumbing sign up, and what have you. I spoke with the building department, and they've advised me to get an accessory apartment approved on it.
But it can't be an accessory apartment either if there's no principal, there's no house on the property. It can only be accessory if it stays with the properties combined.
Right, there's some...
The planning board recommendation is that it either be proposed, it's going to have to be before the planning board signs, has to be addressed either through an action to this board, or, but it's either going to have to be removed, or agreed to that it would be unoccupied until it becomes a single-family residence, but it's laid out in the report, so it'll be addressed one way or the other.
Okay. All right. Any other questions?
So, potting shed is not descriptive. It's a cute little term to hide a cottage that somebody's living in. Is that what it is? We do all sorts of really crazy...
There was a survey that said potting shed. I mean, it's on there historically somewhere.
Yeah, I'd prefer it said potting shed. It's not a single-family dwelling. It doesn't have a CO.
Kind of like the doghouse, at my...
Doesn't have a CO.
Yeah, yeah.
It's a survey, so it says potting shed. Okay.
Okay.
It's a survey.
Well, we will have the opportunity to make sure that that's all handled properly.
Yeah, it's going to be addressed through this process.
Okay, okay. Keith, you had a question?
No, I don't have any.
Okay.
Not a question.
Okay. I wanted to ask if there was anyone from the public who'd like to be heard in connection with the application of Sky Hampton LLC. This is for property located at 200 North McGee Street in Tuckahoe. If not, Bob, this one is yours.
Move to close.
Move to close, okay. Close, except for written subs.
Written submissions by 4/21?
About 4/22.
4/22, sorry.
And then decision 5/5.
Second.
Okay. Mr. Macedonio.
Aye.
Mr. Tudhill.
Aye.
Mr. Daly.
Aye.
Ms. Kern.
Aye.
Trivotai, thank you for being here. Have a good rest of your night.
Thank you.
It's fun names on the applications tonight.
I'm sorry?
Fun names on the applications.
Yeah, we do.
We want them, and then it becomes a little different.
All right, item five on the agenda is Blades of Grass LLC. 102 Highland Terrace in Bridgehampton, Suffolk County Tax Map 900-87-3-10.6. Applicant requests for filing relief from Town Code 330-77D, placement of accessory buildings, structures, and uses in residence districts for a proposed 60 by 120 tennis court, proposed rear yard coverage of 31 percent, where a maximum of 20 percent is permitted. In addition, variance relief is required from Town Code 330-76D, placement of accessory building structures and uses in all districts, and 330-83C yards to allow a portion of the proposed swimming pool, and a portion of the proposed pool house to be located within the total required side yard of the principal building, and any other relief necessary.
The board has jurisdiction?
All right. For the applicant, David Gilmartin Jr., Greenberg, Troryg, 23, 17, Montalk Highway, Bridgehampton. As our first order of business, I think we should administratively clean up what we need here. We do not need the variances from 76D and 83C. We have that interpretation from the building inspector. So, there was a different interpretation put onto this prior to the legal advertisement going out. We discussed it with the building inspector, and he's agreed that we don't need that relief.
What was that again, 33...
76D and 83C.
76D and 83C. There are, that's for the pool house and the pool. There are, there is
an existing building permit. I gave...
Okay. Let me see. Do we have extras? Because we have two board members who are on here today.
Yeah, we do. We think I brought enough.
They're all extras, because we both have.
Okay, so, but there are two people who are on here.
Oh, okay.
Put one down. Is Cornelia's coming?
Yep, he is coming.
So, let's put one down for him.
Okay.
And then one for Helen. Do you want one for Helen?
Yep. So, we didn't need 76D, and what was the other one you said you didn't need?
83C. So, for the pool and pool house, we do not need relief for those two structures, and in fact, they do have a building permit for them. So, what we're left with is the 77D requirement, which is the tennis court and the required rear yard.
55 by 110 tennis court?
We'll get to that. So, I have discussed this boards, and we're certainly well aware of this board's positions with tennis courts. So, if you look at Exhibit 1 with the exhibit that I gave you, and I'll be referring to that during my presentation, we did shrink the size of the tennis court to 55 by 120. This reduced the rear yard lot coverage to 27.85, which is less than the 31 that we had initially applied for. We also cut the corners on the court to try and reduce the relief there. And I am aware that this board most often requires a reduction to 55 by 110, but I think there are extenuating circumstances with respect to this application, and I'd ask you to keep an open mind, listen, and then at the end, balance, and we'll see where we come out. So, the second exhibit in there is an aerial photograph. It looks like this. It identifies our property, which is the vacant property. And if you look three properties down, there's a tennis court there. And this board gave a relief for that tennis court, which we have attached as Exhibit 3. That tennis court got two different types of relief. It got setback relief from 30 to 20, and it got rear yard lot coverage from 31, from 20 to 31. I would say that that, if you read that decision, that sort of identifies the character of the neighborhood, right? These, the tennis courts that are pushed back, and as you listen to my presentation, I think you'll, and read that decision, I think you'll agree that we're in a very similar circumstance to that applicant, which leads me to the benefit to the applicant. If we come back to the survey, we ran into a problem. There's two areas. There's an area here, which is in between the pool and the tennis court, and it's really the only yard that's on this property that can be usable as grass. And as I will get to and endeavor to prove to you, this is a very athletically inclined and active family that would enjoy the use of that area to, you know, play soccer, throw lacrosse balls around, that type of thing, and they are very athletically inclined. Our issue came, if you look at the survey, the house is set 106 feet back from the street, so that's what's created the squeeze for us here. The front yard setback is 80, but the building department required us to push it back to accommodate parking that we needed in this area. So, we're back, pushed back 26 feet, which shifts everything on the property to the rear. With respect to the athletically inclined family, the people that will be using this court, and I've provided it in here, I've provided you some resumes and background of the people that often play on this court, they are collegiate players, and some have been professionals, and some have been, some of them have been ranked professionally. So, the additional 10 feet over what this board usually asks for is very much needed in this particular instance with the level of the player that's playing.
Are there tennis clubs anywhere, places that one can go to get, play tennis in larger tennis courts?
I, you know, I don't know. I'm not a tennis player, and I'm certain that they're phenomenally expensive to join.
More expensive than putting one in.
If you can, if you can get in, is my second part of it. If you can get in, I don't know if you can. But, you know, I've never tried. But if you look at the level of player here, I think it's different than your normal recreational weekend-type player.
55 by 110, Dave.
If I could finish, and if you'd keep it open mind, I feel like it's...
Re-listen, Bob.
Right, and I'm getting to the good part, right, the part that's going to persuade you.
It's going to be good. It's going to be good.
It is. We also have letters from the two neighbors. If you look Exhibit 5, the one to the south and the one to the north, they both have no problem. And as well, they shouldn't, because the court ends up moving further away from, further away from their property, which is highlighted in Exhibit 6, which shows you the setbacks from all of the properties that surround it. So, I think the two lots that could really be impacted here is our lot to the south, which is shown here. And we've talked to that neighbor, and the neighbor prefers that we move it back further. The other possibly impacted neighbor is behind us here. And if you look at this, if you look at this... And if you look at this, if you look at this, this is the landscape plan that was presented, we are 227 feet away with this court from that neighbor, right? There's a 60-foot wide agricultural easement in between our property and that house. So again, it's 227 feet away. In order to minimize any impact to our neighbors, you'll see the last, the last part of Exhibit 6 shows the, shows the plan that we have here for the court. And it's the full landscape plan. And I would highlight to you the fact that it's sunk four feet to minimize impact, and there's stockade sound fence on either side of the, of the sides that are going towards the neighbor and to the back. So it's sunken. It is soundproof. We have the neighbor's approval, if you will, to do it. I can't imagine any detriment that a neighbor could come up with here. I, I understand and I get, I guess, the, the view of the board that this is really a luxury item. It is a luxury item. But that, that is, that is the benefit that comes to, to this owner. One, to retain as much of a lawn as he can to use, to use the, the property in its highest and best way for his family. And it has absolutely no impact to any of the properties around it, as demonstrated by the setbacks that this court is from those properties. And then on top of it, the mitigation that the, that the owner has agreed to do here and is demonstrated by the landscape plans that I've presented to you. So I think as you look to balance it, what's the harm? You know, my, my mentor Herb Phillips would say, "Where's the harm? I don't see any harm." And that's, that's really how you look at setback variances, right? 90% of it is impact to the neighborhood, right? Very rarely do you get into any other issues. So in that 90%, I would ask you to balance it. Where's the impact? Where's the harm? There's a significant benefit to the level of competitor player that's going to be using this court. And it's, and it's, you know, it's enough that he has engaged me to come to this board instead of, instead of going a different route. And I think that demonstrates the real benefit to him. And again, it may be a luxury benefit, but I think when you look at the balancing test, you have to balance the impacts. So there's a benefit to him, luxurious or not, and I don't think there's any impact that anybody can demonstrate to me that the extra, you know, I'd say the extra 10 feet, but the, but the lot coverage, the 28.75, is certainly consistent with other applications that this board has done in the past.
Yeah, but percentage without, without a doubt is consistent, is consistent with some tennis court variances we've granted. The size is not, yeah, at least not in recent.
Well, and there is a conforming location for this test.
There is, but that's, I guess.
I know, you always talk about the balance, but when there is a conforming location, that has to be taken into account.
It, it can be taken into account, and I think probably what you're, you're getting at is really the, the next part of the New York State town law that says that it has to be the minimum variance necessary, right? And that, for the outcome that this particular property owner would like on his property, is the minimum variance necessary. When I spoke to him today, he said, you know, "Please get me all you can. That, that grass, that grass area is really precious to me and I got, my house got pushed back because of the parking."
What's the coverage at 55 by 110? The rear lot coverage?
I don't, I don't know that.
My guess is it'll be around.
You didn't figure it out?
25.
Come on, you didn't?
I didn't.
Yeah.
Well, but listen, I was very confident that this board would balance this application.
Glad you were confident.
Well, you know, I think I deserve to be.
And you're an excellent advocate for your, for your clients always.
Always.
Yeah. But. He's just trying to destroy the only precedence we have set left.
Yeah.
Well, I'm sorry if, if you will indulge me, my client's watching and I don't, I just want to make sure.
Has he tried, has he considered pickleball?
Is this the athletically inclined?
Yes. You know, I, I would, you know, ask you to read, these are, you know, one of the players was collegiately ranked at TOPPS, part of two national championship teams. There are former pros that are there. The one, the additional length is important, right? And I, you know, I spent a lot of time with Mr. Phillips and he's the one that originally went through this, when he did the whole analysis. And his challenge to me was always, yeah, show me a player. You got, you need a professional player that can get from the end line to the, to the baseline, to the back. I have finally found the people that can do that. I have never had that before.
And there's something else that Herb would say about tennis court applications, which is the only reason in his, in his mind, years ago, that the rear yard lot coverage provision is in the town code, is to stop people from building tennis courts and back in rear yards. That, that's what it's there for, that, that, that it makes it difficult for people to have tennis courts.
I got Herb's phone number right now.
That's right. He'd be awesome.
I never used to be. You know, if you want.
I, I have it too. I just don't want to talk to him yet.
Yeah. He also used to say that, that people were paying taxes for their whole rear yard and could use their whole year for your yard.
Again, I don't break, I don't come to this board lightly, right? I've, I've, you know, never. And I've, and I've gotten my lumps here oftentimes, but I, I think that, that this is a compelling case and I'd, I'd ask you to really consider it, not reflexively say, "Oh, it's one of those lot covers, let's go to 55 by 110."
Okay. Well, I, I don't, you know, we could, I think probably we need to give some guidance here. But I get the sense that we're going to want a 55 by 110 tennis court. What you could, I'm, I'm just trying to think what could be done, unless the board sees it differently, and feel free to jump in. We would need, you know, if, if that's the direction that we're going in, we'll see if there are any neighbors here as well, then we would need, you know, revised, a revised survey.
Right. If, is there a number, again, it's the, you know, there's, there's two things I'm trying to balance. One, the retention of an area of grass they can play in. And then accommodate the competitive level of the people that are playing there, which is paramount to my, to my client, and that's, that's at 120 feet.
Which is more important to the client?
You're not going to accommodate those people. We're going to accommodate them. That's what you're here for.
And which is more important?
If I misspoke, if I, if I said something where you were going to.
Let's get that perfectly straight.
Well.
Could you locate a 55 by 120 tennis court in a conforming location?
Well, what, what I would ask is if I'm able to shift that closer to the house, to the street, if I get under a certain number, would this board be inclined then if, if we picked up, picked out a number like 27, if I get to that point?
You're at 27.
You talking about the lot coverage, rear lot coverage?
The rear lot coverage.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah.
You said 28.
28.75 is what we're at.
Oh, I thought you said 27.85.
No, it's on the, I'm sorry.
That's what I wrote down.
That's what I wrote down too.
Yeah.
Then I, I certainly misspoke. If you look on the survey, it's.
It's there. Okay, okay.
I mean, so go from 28.75 to 27.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I mean, it's, it's an offer.
Okay. Well, I'm, I'm, I'm not, I don't want to put anybody on the spot, but my, my hunch is that we've been sticking for a long time with the 55 by 110.
But this does say 27.85. Yeah.
I'm sorry.
It says 27.85?
Yeah, it does. It says 27.85.
27.85. Okay, okay. And we've heard different arguments as to why we should, we should, you know, not, not do that. And my, and my perspective of it has been, you know, if people want a variance for, for this tennis court, they're going to get a reduced-sized tennis court. And I understand there are, and we've had these arguments before with, you know.
Every, every time you come back, David, it's going to be, "Ah, they're like semi-professional tennis players and you granted us this 55 by 120 and now you have to do it again."
Well, you know, that, that gets into a different, a different question, which is, are you bound by your precedent? And.
No, we don't set precedent. Each case has its own merits.
Right, and I would say that.
The merits of this case isn't doing me any good.
I didn't, I didn't come to you and say that the one that's three lots down serves as precedent because it's different, right? There's, there's many different factors to it. I said it's, it's the character of the neighborhood that this board has already established in granting that tennis court. It, it granted the 31% and we're far better. We're not 30 feet off. We moved it to 38 feet. So we conform zoning-wise, three feet on one side, eight feet on the other, right? We, we tried to push it as far forward to get that number down as possible. And I, I understand it, but understand, you know, there's another point of view here. And how does that 10 feet extra from 110 to 120 impact anybody that's around this court? And I, and I think you're going to be hard-pressed to come up with, with a very good answer other than that's the way that we've always done it. And respectfully, I think those are the most dangerous words in the English language, right? We've always done it that way. What, you know, what in this case, not having to do with any other case, I don't, I would rarely argue precedent. I would rarely come to you because you have a very experienced counsel who would rip that argument apart. Properties are different, as, as Mr. Tuthill said, but you need to balance, right? And where is the harm in the extra 10 feet here to the surrounding neighbors? I don't see it. And I don't think that, you know, there's been, there's been any other argument than that's the way that we've always done it. And that's mine.
I, I don't disagree with you, David, and I would be okay with the 55 by 120, but you need three more.
I would be okay if you put it in a conforming location.
Right, but that really.
That's, that's my point.
Right, I, I got it, but if I could, can I respond?
Otherwise, 55 by 110.
Okay. If I, can I respond or is that?
No, you can, yeah.
Right. So what, what that does is that completely undermines the application process and, and totally discounts an applicant coming here and asking for relief. You've looked at the one side of the balancing test, which is the benefit, and I think you've come to a conclusion that it, the benefit isn't worthy of giving a variance. And you're not looking at the second part of the argument. The balancing test is where's the impact to the character of the neighborhood? And I've litigated these cases and it's almost as if an applicant has proven the benefit by actually applying and coming to the board and asking it. We've gone a step further in that and said why we needed, the difficulty of the setback of the house and, and wanting to keep as much of an area of grass as they could to use. So you have to balance it and, and, you know, discounting why they're applying, to me, in the balancing test doesn't overcome the ability that we are so far away from people and the people next door to us, we're moving further away from. If you bring us into a conforming location, they may not be so happy. They're happier we're moving it back. And then we don't have an impact to anybody behind us really because it's so far. And then sunken, screened heavily. I mean, if you look at the screening, there are 24-foot trees there.
Okay.
Done with your presentation, buddy?
Yep.
Well, I'm, I'm answering questions. My presentation is.
Okay.
Yeah, so I'm just.
See if there's anybody out, out there.
Sure. Okay. Is there any, anyone from, or any, any other questions? Is there anyone from the public we'd like to be heard this evening in connection with the application of Blades of Grass LLC? This is for property located at 102 Highland Terrace in Bridgehampton? Does not appear to be anyone. I, I think it's only fair that we give David a sense of where we are.
I just, if I just interrupt, my apologies.
Sure.
I have my client is in Florida, so he's texting me. He said, "Would it work if we, if we got to 25% rear yard lot coverage? Would that work?" So he's giving up part of the lawn that he wanted to retain.
I'm on 55 by 110. I, I am. I appreciate your arguments. If we go down the road of accepting the argument that someone who's a professional tennis player or somebody who's a, a sports enthusiast gets more relief than, than other folks, I think that would be something that will be used in the future. Well, well, each case stands on its own merits. I think that would be used in the future. And so, and I want us to be consistent in, with what we do. But I'm only one vote. That's, and I'm, and I did listen to, to what you had to say, but that's, that's where I am. I mean, I see a 55 by 110 tennis court as being perfectly usable. That, that, that this, this extra 10 feet isn't going to mean that it's not going to be usable because of, because of that, that 10 feet. If, if we're not, if that were not the case, then I might see it differently. But I still see it as a decent-sized tennis court.
Just there's, what's the harm in the additional 10 feet to neighbors? Again, I said too many times already.
I'm okay with it.
Okay.
I missed the first part of your presentation. I will read it, I promise you. I may watch the video. But I'm at 55 by 110, and if you want to go beyond that, I would agree that a conforming location would be better served.
Well, you know where I am, so.
Yep.
You know where I am, babe?
All right. We will, we'll come back and, we'll come back. The 25% is not something, it's 55 by 110 or nothing with, with the people that oppose. Is that fair to say?
Yeah.
No matter, no matter what percentage we get to?
Unless you have it in a conforming location, yeah.
All right, so you want, you want to come back?
Uh, yes.
Okay.
Let's say the first meeting in May, if that's open.
Yep, it's May 5.
Be a lucky night. I'm not going to be here.
Makes sense.
I do like seeing you. Believe it or not.
All right, I'll move the hold this over for purposes to 5, what?
55.
55.
Thanks for your time and your accommodation.
You're welcome. Okay. Okay. Mr. Tuthill.
Aye.
Ms. Kern.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Mr. Daley.
Aye.
Mr. Macedonio.
Aye.
Trivatai, thanks so much, Renee.
Hey. Yeah, cuties. We're going to move on to White Bananas LLC. 142 Middle Line Highway in North C, Suffolk County Tax Map 900-34-2-24.1. Applicant requests relief from the following provisions of the town code for an existing dwelling on a non-conforming lot. 330-84D, pyramid height for a pyramid encroachment of .02 cubic feet on the eastbound side of the property. And 330-11 residential district stable dimension regulation for a building height of 37.6 feet where a maximum of 32 feet is permitted and any other relief necessary.
The board has jurisdiction.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Board Members. My name is Alice Cooley of Matthews, Kirsten Cooley with offices at 241 Panago Road in East Hampton. I'm here on behalf of the applicant White Banana LLC. I'm joined by my partners, Brian Matthews and David Kirst, and also by Bob Smith of Squires Holden, who can answer any questions you have regarding the surveying for the property. He's also submitted an affidavit on this file. I apologize in advance, I have a bit of a lengthy presentation. Before I go through the variance standards governing the relief we're seeking, I think it's essential to understand how it is that we got here, so I'd like to present a timeline of the events. The purpose of this timeline is to show that the need for the height variance of 5.5 feet at the ridge line and a minor pyramid advance, variance of .02 cubic feet arises from an inadvertent error. And to that point, and unfortunately, with hindsight being 2020, there is plenty of blame to go around. I reviewed the building permit file at the building department and the building permit for this house dated August 28th, 2019 was issued based on a survey dated July 30th, 2019, showing a first-floor elevation of 140 feet. Whereas the architectural drawing showed a first-floor elevation of 134.5 feet, that Whereas the architectural drawing showed a first floor elevation of 134.5 feet, that initial error depicting the first-floor elevation on the survey unfortunately went unnoticed and uncorrected. When it became time to actually construct the residence, the builder requested that the surveyor set a benchmark for the mason to pour the footings for the foundation. Once again, because of the error that survey, that benchmark was set at a first-floor elevation for 140, instead of the first-floor elevation of 134.5 called for on the building plans. The footing and subsequent sound, foundation were poured, and accordingly, it was too high. The foundation was inspected by the Building Department, and the inspection passed on 11/27/19. A copy of that inspection slip is in your package. The house was framed and inspected by the Building Department, that inspection passed as well. The strapping was completed and inspected, as was the insulation. They all passed. The house was completed in its entirety on or around February or March 2021, and again, the house passed all inspections conducted by the Building Department. It was not until the final CO inspection in April of 2021, when an inspector asked for a pyramid diagram because he thought that there was a pyramid encroachment to be shown on the survey, and that's when the height-related issue was noticed. A copy of that inspection slip is also in your package. Three different building inspectors inspected the construction during the required progress inspections, and each of these inspections passed. To be clear, I am stating this not to assign blame to the town for any inadvertent errors that were made. I'm simply offering these facts to illustrate how many people looked at this construction as it was ongoing and did not see a problem. In July 2021, the former Chief Building Inspector Dennis O'Rourke determined that the northeast elevation was the front elevation for purposes of determining the height, and instructed our surveyor, Bob Smith, to prepare a pyramid diagram for that area with the average grade at that location. Using that northeast elevation as the front of the house, that pyramid diagram shows that the average grade was 136.5. It was at that point we discovered we need a rid, we needed a ridge height variance of 2.5 feet. We applied for that variance in October of 2021. A letter from Dennis O'Rourke supporting his determination is also in your package. On January 2022, Acting Chief Building Inspector, Acting Former Chief Building Inspector Art Gerhauser reversed Dennis O'Rourke's determination and determined that the northwest elevation of the house was the front elevation. This reversal resulted in the calculation of natural grade being decreased, so that the average grade is 133.5, and we now need a ridge height variance of 5.5 feet. We are here today to ask for that relief. Some things that are important to note about this site that I ask you to keep in mind when considering this request. This house is not built perpendicular to the road, as you can see on the surveys. It is instead at an angle, and the front door is ostensibly in the rear. In photo number two, you can see the front of the house. The site slopes very steeply up from Middle Line Highway to the house. Photo number one in your package is taken from the driveway entrance. Thus, the natural grade at the front of the house facing the street is much lower than the rear of the house where the front door is. In fact, the natural grade at the front door is at an elevation of 140, was, which was the first-floor elevation shown on the survey when the building per, permit was issued, and if that was used, we would be compliant with it. The site is heavily wooded with strict clearing restrictions. These tight restrictions resulted in corner stakes being buried by the fill that was removed from the foundation, and the building locations and clearing had to be continually restaked as the stakes, stakes kept getting buried. In short, it was a difficult work site. Uh, I'd like to go to the, through the standards now. Uh, there'll be no undesirable change that will be produced in the character of the neighborhood, nor will any detriment to nearby properties be created from the variance sought by the applicant. No neighbor will be affected by the grant of this variance. This house cannot be seen at all from Middle Line Highway, which you can see in photo number one. As the area is characterized by large lots, steep slopes, and is densely forested, the driveway is very steep, and there is a grade change of over 30 feet, in fact, it's more like 35 feet, that slopes up towards the house over the course of the 800-foot driveway. You can see this in photo one, which is from the base of the driveway, and again, in photo three, which is from the upper deck looking down the driveway. The surrounding homes are not affected by the height of the house because they are shielded from the house by dense natural vegetation. You can see this in photo seven, which was taken from the front door, which is ostensibly the rear, and photo four, which shows the view from the upper deck of the house. The surrounding vegetation is just as tall or taller than the applicant's residence. I also think it's noteworthy to mention that the house itself is not too tall from a structural standpoint, but was built too high on the site due to the baseline error in calculating the first-floor elevation. In fact, due to the natural topography in the area, the neighboring houses are all at higher natural grades than the subject premises. In your packet, there is an aerial, it should be on the cover, that depicts the distances from the subject property to the affected neighbors and their natural grades. Uh, the Chun House is 276 feet away, and that house is at a base elevation of 154. Uh, the neighbor Vasquez is 200 feet away and at an elevation of 145. Roberts is 300 feet away and at an elevation of 168. The benefits sought by the applicant cannot be achieved by any other method that is feasible for the applicant to pursue. Unfortunately, due to the builder and surveyor error, the top of the foundation was set too high, and the house has been fully constructed. This error was not realized until after the owner applied for a certificate of occupancy. It was the intention to build the house according to plans. Compliance with the 32 height limitation would require taking apart the roof, dismantling the rafters, refinishing the interior and insulation, relocating all mechanicals. The existing gables would have to be lowered, and the second-floor ceiling height would all have to be lowered. This would affect the structure of the entire house down to the studs. Further detail on the burden of compliance at this juncture are set forth in two letters in your package, uh, from the project architect McDonough and Conroy, PC, dated October 1, 2021, and February 22, 2022, uh, with an estimated cost of $750,000, which is on top of the amount already spent to construct the residence, and does not take into account the degradation in value as a result of the compromised design. As feasibility is essentially the critical language of the standard, we believe these factors show that any other route, aside from the requested variance, is not in fact feasible. An alternative way to view this application is that this lot is akin to a flag lot, and that the driveway is very long, with the front portion heavily wooded, and all construction is located in the rear portion of the property. If this was a flag lot, the front yard would be the driveway or right-of-way, which is the location that the prior Chief Building Inspector Dennis O'Rourke determined was the front yard for determining the, the average existing grade at 136.5. You can see a photo of this elevation, photo six. The requested variance in the context of this particular property and the surrounding properties is small, and given the distance between properties, the dense vegetation, the steep slopes, there is no anticipated harm from the height of this house. Though the grant of this variance does sound large in the abstract, there is no precedential value to the grant of this variance, as this application can easily be distinguished from any others. Frankly, no one wants these facts. This is a very steep site, and the surveyors, masons, contractors, and building inspectors all worked on this project, and no one during the time of this construction, when it was applied for or built to completion, caught this mistake. I believe the reason no one caught it is because the site is unique with the steep slopes, and the orientation of the house is strange in reality. There is no harm. I understand that the board may be hesitant to grant this variance in order to discourage bad actors in the future, but I assure you that there is no ultimate benefit to having a higher house on this site. This was not done intentionally to achieve a water view or any view at all. There is nothing to be seen from this house but trees, as lovely as they are. It's not going to stick out as looming because it doesn't loom over anything. It's been standing for three years. Importantly, the fact that the pyramid relief is so inconsequential, it shows the lack of impact on the neighboring properties, and just how undulating the slopes are. The equitable result here is the grant of this variance. The proposed variance will have no adverse effects or impacts on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood. The property itself and the surrounding property remain densely wooded and natural. The alleged difficulty was not entirely self-created by the applicant. An error was made by the builder in setting the top of the foundation too high, based off an incorrect first-floor elevation. And unfortunately, those compounded errors were not realized until the house was built. But that costly mistake was not intentional. There are no bad...
How many more pages you got?
One.
Okay.
I'm sorry, it's important.
That's right, that's right.
There are no bad actors here. I thought it was going to be long.
You did.
You're the bad actor.
I'm doing my street manner.
Hey, hey, let's move on, come on.
I'm almost done.
You didn't say how long.
There are no views from the house now that it is higher, as all you can see are trees all year long, even now. I also note that as a matter of law, if the board imputed the error of the surveyor and the builder to the applicant, a finding of self-creation is not a determinative factor. In summary, this was an error. It went unnoticed, it was compounded. It would only serve to punish the homeowner to their great detriment when they have had no knowledge of their involvement in these errors. This has truly been a nightmare for the owners. The house is sitting empty and unusable for a year. We welcome you to visit the site so you can see for yourself that there is no negative impact. And lastly, Mr. Chairman, I know you're interested in neighbor input. I received a voicemail from Dr. Joan Roberts on this matter at 207 Roses Grove, but she did not respond to my emails or replies. Um, I understand she may be submitting something, but I haven't seen it. Uh, I also spoke with Mr. Chun next door at 146 Middle Line, and he told me that he had no problem with the variance request. I'm done.
Okay. Um, very thorough presentation, and it's, it does help us, actually, to, to understand the history. However, um, you may have been informed at the, at the outset when submitting this application that most of the time when we have as-built, we want to hear from someone who's familiar with what happened, um, what transpired, how it transpired, as opposed to a narrative or an affidavit or an affirmation, um, to have, you know, someone with firsthand knowledge so that the board members can, can ask questions, and so we can, you know, it, it, I understand it in more detail than, I know you did put a lot of detail into the presentation, but that's what we typically, typically do. I'm only one board member. I'd like to see both the builder and the surveyor. I'm not sure where, where other board members are. I'd like to see, have them come in and, and explain what happened.
As I mentioned, the surveyor is here, and, uh, the builder unfortunately is in the hospital having surgery, so he had planned to be here.
The surveyor's here, okay, very good. Well, we'll start, we'll start with the surveyor. Okay, good evening. You can just state your name and address for the record.
Good evening. Bob Smith, Squires in Holden, 46 Jaguar Lane, here in the Village.
Okay, and do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, or nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Okay, Bob, so, um...
Hold on one second. Did everybody, did Alice did submit an affidavit from Bob? It was, it might be in your written submission?
No, it came in, yeah, today.
We just got it like yesterday or today, yeah.
Okay.
It just might help to follow along.
Okay, okay, all right.
It's like three pages long.
Okay, very good. So you, you heard my, my comment, I'm just, I want to ask you...
And, and I will shed, I will shed as much light as I can. We were asked in the very beginning of this project in May 19, uh, May 6th, 9th, 2019, to set a benchmark. Benchmark is a point, physical point set with an elevation on it, and that's a reference to set whatever other grade you're going to use. At the time, the builder told me he couldn't find it. It's on a post, it's next to the driveway, you could drive right up now and still see it. I don't know why he didn't see it, but he selected a grade. His grade actually was too high, and that's, that, that's the error that nobody realized. He asked us to come back and stake it in the hole. Guys came back because there were such big cuts. When they dug out the foundation, the stakes that were up on the, on the slopes, they couldn't get down into the hole. We went back and staked it in the hole. But nobody thought pulling elevation at that time, because, you know, it, it looked, eh, it looks right, no, you know, nobody asked. So there was never a foundation elevation done. When the foundation was finally poured, they framed it, and we went, everything went along normally. Nobody, we, we didn't do a location survey because the builder was, didn't need it to finance it or anything, and then eventually he's done, he says, okay, come do the final survey. We did the final survey, we turned it out, it went to the Building Department, and somebody said, wait a minute, this might be too high. Well, when Dennis, I spoke with the building inspector, the house sits angularly like this, and the road is down here, and the closest side to the road is the short side. That's how we came up with 136.5 as an average grade. Dennis was happy, everybody was happy, they filed the application for a two-foot error in the roof. Dennis left, new building inspector comes in, says, no, we're going to use this side because it's three feet lower. Now, all that was increased the problem. Didn't change anything, the house is still there, and, so it just doesn't make sense. I mean, I have to say this, I have been here in town as a surveyor for 43 years. This is the second time I've been to this board as, having made an error. And I mean, it's not something that we do, we, we, we... You hear it every time somebody comes in and say, the surveyor messed up. Well, if he did, he should be sitting here, and if he's not, he didn't mess up. I admit, this was a mistake. We're, we're partially to blame here. We probably should have shot the footings when we put them in because they were so, such a big hole, but we didn't. And that's...
I don't understand though, Bob, like, because, and again, I just, and then we have new board members, so maybe, maybe they don't understand this either, but when you, when you submit the survey to the Building Department for your, for the first, you know, for the building permit, you do, you had elevations on it, right? So were those incorrect to begin with?
No, those are the same elevations, they've always been there.
Okay, so...
What, if, the problem, part of the problem is, when we get a diagram from the architect to stake the house out, we get a picture of the foundation. We don't get a picture of the, the elevations, the side of the house, I don't know how tall the damn thing is, I know where it is and how big it is. That's what I put in the ground. So, you know, at some point, somebody should have said, well, wait a minute, this house is maxed out, we got to know exactly what the elevations are. The 140 that I put on there for a first floor was...
What, you put that on what, on the, on the survey?
On the survey, yeah.
On the first survey somewhere says 140. I mean, that's, I'd, I'd like you to just, or have somebody attach the surveys that you're talking to for these numbers, because I don't, I don't see all those numbers, and I, I know what you're saying about, um, you know, you're suggesting that Art, you know, these two numbers were the ones that Dennis used, and I guess you're saying these two are the ones that Art used, but there's no, there's no elevation there.
Well, I don't know what you, I mean, there really, there was a topo that covered the whole lot. Now, the problem that I have, I put 140 on there because if you look, the grade in the back of the house is 140. If I set it at 134, he'd be pouring the water in the front door. So I assume when we set that number, that the architect said, okay, 140, and I'm going up 22 feet, right? Or 32 feet, easy laugh. But that wasn't the case. But again, you know, partially, I'll take part of the blame here, I should have said, well, wait a minute, where's, where's the, where are the elevations? How big is this house? But we never do. I mean, we get, we get a foundation, a plan that says, this is the foundation, this is how big it is, stake that out.
Yeah.
And, and there were a lot of, and there were some oversights here, and I, you know, can't help that.
But in, I mean, because we, we do respect you, you're here, and we've had you in opposition to applicants, and we've had you help us, you know, navigate through them. So I really am asking, how, how is it, like, in your opinion, how do you think the Building Department made errors, or, or did...
Oh, no, no, the Building...
But, no, but I mean inadvert, you know, Alice said something, inadvertent something.
They have a nice statement, says they're not responsible.
But they don't, but they don't measure the house.
No, but they get a set of building plans. See, they get a full set of building plans.
Right.
They get a full set that says, this is the first floor, and this is the ridge.
Right.
Okay.
Based on the elevations that you provide, right?
Well, ma, it has nothing to do with me, this is, this is the house.
Right.
It's, this is the foundation, is the first floor, that's the, the roof.
Right.
Pardon my interruption.
And don't they always say 32 feet?
What?
Don't they say 32 feet?
Well, her drawing, that, her drawing says 32 feet.
Yeah.
Right.
But the plan showed 134.5 as the first-floor elevation, and then 32 feet from there.
Right.
The survey said 140. So, I mean, if, you actually go from 140, we're compliant.
But the ser, but that's, I guess that's my question, where, where would you say that the survey shows 140, the average between the two points?
No, no, the 140 is on, on the back of the house.
I mean, I, you know, I don't even know if this is the right survey.
140, no, that's something, 140, but 140, the contour comes across like this.
Oh, oh, the line you're saying, okay. The contour line.
Yeah, the contour line comes across like that. So if you put one, if you put this foundation at 134, you'd be pouring six feet of water into the house.
Okay, that's what I'm saying, I'd like, I'd like these guys to just attach the surveys so that I can find the points that you're talking about.
I can certainly get you one.
I have them.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, just because, these are complicated. Those are really complicated.
One of the problems with the pyramid, the elevation, or the way it's written, is if you have a, if you have a lot that goes like this, the street's out here, you're screwed. But the lot goes like this, you have a five-story house, it still could fall. That's part of the problem, and it's how the Building Department interprets the pyramid.
And I appreciate the fact that there was a, a change in, in Chief Building Inspector, And I appreciate the fact that there was a change in, in chief building inspector, and that had an impact on all of this. Okay.
And the other part of this pyramid, what you're asking for, where's the 0.2 feet? I mean, it's like...
0.2.
Yeah.
We're asking for this, this little corner of, of the house.
Yeah.
You know?
Yeah. Yeah, but, but I will also say a couple of other things, which is that we rarely grant height relief. So if this was not an as-built and it was just proposed...
Right.
We would be scrutinizing it. We would be, we would be trying to figure out ways for you to reduce the size to, to...
No, I understand.
To eliminate the, the height relief, because we don't grant it that often. And usually, the only times we do grant it is when it's like a FEMA elevation issue, at least for the most part.
This isn't FEMA, this is FEMA compliant.
I understand.
It's not a mental flood zone.
No, it's just there. And the other thing I just want to mention, from, from my perspective, is that I appreciate the fact that, you know, it's, it's the builder and the surveyor, and, and basically it was, was in that realm as to how the error, where the error originated from, but it's still a self-created hardship, in my view. But that, but, but just like you said, self-created hardship is just one part of our test, and it's not determinative in itself. We have to look at the entire five-part test. So I consider this as-built, or I'm sorry, I consider this, this to be a self-created hardship, but, you know, I'm, you know, not reaching, I'm not reaching the conclusion one way or another as to whether, you know, it is, the variance application satisfies the five-part test, even, even under these circumstances. Now, the builder, I understand he's, he's sick, and sorry to hear that. I don't know whether the, Bob's testimony was satisfactory to board members in terms of what transpired.
There's an awful lot to digest here. So I would be opposed to closing the public hearing. I think we should leave it open.
If anybody has any more questions, I'm certainly...
And have, and have an opportunity to digest it, because it's really complicated.
Yeah.
I mean, I'd like to take a copy of your, your, you know, I, I, don't you, I mean, this is the way I feel.
I, no, I agree.
I mean, it's just, it's not something that I'd like to make, you know, based on written submissions. I'd like to take a chance to take a look at it, maybe come back with questions, and, you know, explore it a little bit more deeply. I mean, that's how I feel.
Well, I, I, like I said, I think that's fair. I thought, we've had, we've granted a lot of, you know, we've seen a lot of height variance. Alice showed me. We, I didn't see the contour.
We have to wait for the builder to be able to appear, then that's fine.
Yeah. No, and that's, that's why I was getting confused.
May 5th.
$750,000 would be the cost.
That's what she said.
Yeah. Yeah, no, it would be a huge, huge cost. But, but, you know, when we go through the, the as-built applications, you know, we want to understand how it happened. Okay? And I, and you, I know you, you, you specified it in, in your presentation, but hearing it from the people who were actually, you know, in, involved with, with what the error was, you know, you know, I find myself to be helpful. So I'm getting the sense that, at least from a few board members, that they want you to come back with the builder.
I just want to say, I did go to the property. I drove down the long driveway. There is no way that people can see that house with all of the trees around it and everything else. It's very well disguised.
Thank you.
I mean, it's, you know, it's a beautifully built house, and it seems to me like there was some confusion as to what's the front and what's the back. And, you know, that kind of added to this whole, you know, craziness. So, but in, in terms of, you know, just kind of taking a look at it, I don't see that it's a problem with the height in terms of neighbors.
Thank you.
But I think it's really helpful for us to go through how did we get here?
Right.
And, and have a better appreciation of it.
I did, I did very much try to get the builder here, and then he had emergency surgery, so basically that is more important than this.
Of course.
Absolutely.
And I, I implore any of you to please, please visit the site.
Can I ask you a question?
Yeah.
I actually visited the site myself, and, I mean, what a hill that is on. It's pretty, yeah.
It's amazing.
Long drive. Now, just for practical purposes, if I'm looking at the front door, because I'm looking at your photo now, is it 32 feet up?
It's actually less.
From the front door, it's less.
Right, from the front door, right. So, so if this lot was flat, based on the front door, then you don't need there, it's just because of the big drop in the back.
That's exactly right. It's, I think it's like 31.4 from the front.
I think that's part of the problem with, what was the front of the house? Now, zoning says the front's by the street.
Yeah.
But the way this house was built, because of the hill, was the front door's on top of the hill.
Yeah.
Right.
I think that's part of it, yeah.
And it's also...
The topography up there is, you know...
Yeah, it's like a wave.
It's not the first time we dealt with topography issues up there, so to speak.
Right.
Yep.
It's beautiful but difficult.
Yep.
Okay. And I did notice, confirming your chart here, it does seem to be quite a bit lower than the surrounding houses. So it's not like, it's not like it's dominating over the top. It's, it's, yeah, at least a little bit lower than the other ones around.
I agree.
Okay. So I wanted to ask, any, any other questions before I ask anyone from, anyone from the public? Any other questions?
Yeah.
No? Okay. Is there anyone from the public who would like to be heard this evening in connection with the application of Wade Banana LLC? This is for property located at 142 Middle Line Highway in North Sea. If not, Susan, it sounds like we're going to keep it open until May 5th. Is that agreeable?
Yes.
Okay.
So we need in-person testimony from one of the builders?
Yes.
Okay.
And hopefully the builder or builders who are familiar with, you know, what would actually happen.
And is it possible for you to share what, you know, a written copy of your presentation?
My presentation? Yeah, because it's very long.
It was very long. I mean, is that, is that appropriate, Katie, to have that put into the record?
It's, it's Alice, I mean, she can, you know, she could kind of...
She can submit it for the file?
Yeah, I'll submit it.
Okay.
Because it would be helpful to make a look.
I'll reduce my font because it's very big.
Okay.
Other than having to watch it and stop it and write it down?
Yeah, yeah, no, and, and she's done a nice job.
Yeah. Like I said, I can't...
Just, just in a, you know, I really don't have a problem with this. I think we need to solve, get it done. So hopefully we can do that after we have the public flogging of the builder.
But, but it's, it's complicated. I'd like to understand it a little bit better, just for my edification.
And like I said, I just wanted to see some attachments to Bob's affidavit.
I'll get you all the surveys.
Just to follow along. Because I, like I said, I don't think we have all the ones with the contours, and, and I, you know, I'm, I'm a little confused, you know. I mean, just like the other ones that Bob has testified on, is the board granting it based on the five and a half feet? Or are you, you know, should they be granting it based on the two and a half? If we have two different building inspectors who have written it up?
Yes.
Yeah.
I think that's meaningful as well.
Okay. The, the other thing that I want to make a point about the benchmark. Benchmark is just a reference point. It has nothing to do with where the house is going to be. It's just put up, you know, anywhere. This house made the problem because of the hill. They put it on top of the hill, put the benchmark. Now, that's a reference point, so it says 145. If your first floor was 150, you'd go up five feet. If it's 135, you'd have to go down 10 feet. But that, that's where the problem was. And apparently, the builder said he couldn't find it.
Okay. So I have lead on this, so I'm going to move that we adjourn and keep open the public hearing and adjourn to May 5th.
Okay.
Second.
Well, thank you for hearing me out.
You're welcome. I appreciate it. Okay. Ms. Kern?
Aye.
Mr. Daley?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Uh, Mr. DeS, I'm not Mr. DeS, Mr. Macedonio.
Aye.
Mr. Tud Hill. Mr. DeS isn't here anymore. We miss him. Chair votes aye. Thank, thank you all.
I won't take that personally.
We often start somewhere, right? We do.
What are we doing now?
Uh, Blessing Fields.
Yeah.
Combro.
11 Blessing Fields LLC, 163 West Montauk Highway in Hampton Bays. Suffolk County Tax Map 900-222-112. Appropriate request for lead from the following provision.
This is a holdover.
Holdover. I'm not reading it.
You don't have to read it.
I'm not gonna.
Correct. This is, this is on for a lead agency resolution. We had had it on before, and then we realized we didn't leave enough time to coordinate SECR, so Adam has a lead agency resolution.
I do.
That the board can vote on.
Yep. Okay. So I have a SECR resolution in connection with the application of Blessing Fields LLC. Whereas the Zoning Board of Appeals has received a submittal on behalf of Blessing Fields LLC for property located at 163 West Montauk Highway, Hampton Bays, Suffolk County Tax Map Number 922112. And whereas the submittal has been accompanied by, one, an application for variances in connection with a proposed office building and general trade building in an HB zoning district; two, an environmental assessment form; and three, other correspondence. And whereas, after a review of the submittals, the Zoning Board of Appeals found that this project is an unlisted action under the New York State Environmental Quality Review Act, SECR, and coordinated review with the following involved agencies: the Southampton Town Planning Board, Suffolk County Department of Health Services, and Suffolk County Department of Public Works, each of which was notified of such application by letter dated March 2nd, 2022. And whereas, the Southampton Town Planning Board has indicated that they would like to assume lead agency status in connection with the SECR review of this project, now therefore be it resolved that the Southampton Town ZBA hereby agrees that the Southampton Town Planning Board should assume lead agency status with regards to the application of 911 Flanders Road LLC pursuant to 6 New York CRR 617.6B.
Adam, that's, that's...
That's wrong. That's wrong.
Did I write it wrong in there, or are you reading the one from the...
Yep. No, 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 no. It's written wrong. It's written wrong. The application was, try it again.
All right.
Uh, resolve that the Southampton Town ZBA hereby agrees that the Southampton Town Planning Board should assume lead agency status in connection with the application of Blessing Fields LLC pursuant to 6 New York CRR 617.6B. And be it further resolved that this board directs that a copy of this resolution be forwarded to the Southampton Town Planning Board, Suffolk County Department of Health Services, and Suffolk County Department of Public Works.
Second.
Mr. Daley?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Mr. Macedonio?
Aye.
Mr. Tud Hill?
Aye.
Ms., Ms. Kern?
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
Okay.
And with this one, now, do we have to get, have a new date?
Well, did you want to come up, John? Are you here on this?
Yes.
Yeah. So, you know, this was open for all purposes, so we can see if anybody's here to speak on it, and then we'll ask Anthony, you know, for, for, you know, recommend another second date.
Okay. Very good.
Good evening, members of the board. I won't take up too much of your time. Just wanted to keep you apprised on where we are as applicants. Our office and InterScience are both representing BH6, Blessing Fields LLC. Planning assumed lead agency by their vote of last month, earlier this month, I'm sorry, and obviously tonight, we, we agreed with that. Our clients are working on a revised set of plans to lower the magnitude of the pyramid encroachments on both the front and the back buildings, and possibly also the side yard relief that we will need. So we will be providing you with revised plans on that, hopefully fairly soon.
Okay.
So if you have any questions, I'm here tonight.
Anthony, do we know when it's on the planning board?
Well, what I would say is, I'm assuming John will speak to Wayne. If you're submitting revised plans and you want that reviewed as part of the SECR review, first you're going to submit a letter giving the planning board a waiver of the timeframes. Otherwise, we're going to have to base it on the plans that you have, because we operate within timeframes. So it'd be nice if you gave a waiver for that. But we're going to need a little time to get this done, so it's not going to be, I don't think it's a month, John, right? 30 days is not going to be enough for revised plans to come in, planning board to do the environmental review and everything, so I, I think June would be more appropriate.
Okay. And let me get you the dates in June. June 2nd or June 16th? I don't know if you have a preference.
June 2nd.
We can do June 2nd. If something happens, we could always...
Okay.
Okay. Before we do that, any other questions? Is there anyone from the public who is waiting to be heard this evening in connection with the application of Blessing Fields LLC? This is for property located at 261 West Montauk Highway in Hampton Bays. Okay. If not, I would move that we hold the application of Blessing Fields LLC open for all purposes until our June 2nd meeting.
Second.
Mr. Daley?
Aye.
Ms. Kern?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Uh, Mr. Macedonio?
Aye.
Mr. Tud Hill?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Thanks so much for being here. Have a good rest of your night.
Item 12 is Dilla Patel and Zabjit Kahl Dielen. Sorry about that. 147 Edmire Drive, North Sea, Suffolk County Tax Map 900-31-1-3.2.
Do you have anybody here for this? This is like Mark Schiffer's firm? Oh.
Yes. Mark's actually in the parking lot.
Okay.
Should be up here in a few minutes.
Should be up here in a few minutes.
All right, we can second call it because Lester will be quick.
Okay.
All right. Then we have Kim R. Lester, 17 Allenson Lane, Hampton Bay, Suffolk County Tax Map, 900-323-59.
So this is a holdover as well. Adam has a lead agency resolution.
I do.
Hopefully I don't have typos in.
Okay. So I'm just going to start by reading the resolution. So this is a SECRE resolution in connection with the application of Kim R. Lester. Whereas the zoning board of appeals has received a submittal on behalf of Kim R. Lester for property located at 17 Allenson Lane, Hampton Bays, Suffolk County Tax Map number And whereas the submittal has been accompanied by one, an application for variances in connection with the addition of a second use boatyard dry boat storage in an RWB zoning district; two, an environmental assessment form, and three other correspondence. And whereas after a review of the submittals, the zoning board of appeals found that this project is an unlisted action under the New York State Environmental Quality Review Act, SECRE, and coordinated review with the following involved agencies: the Southampton Town Planning Board and the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation, each of which was notified of such application by letter dated March 2, 2022. And whereas the Southampton Town Planning Board has indicated that they would like to assume lead agency status in connection with the SECRE review of this project, now therefore be it resolved that the Southampton Town ZBA hereby agrees that the Southampton Town Planning Board should assume lead agency status with regards to the application of Kim R. Lester pursuant to 6 New York CRR 617.6B, and be it further resolved that this board directs that a copy of this resolution be forwarded to the Southampton Town Planning Board and the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation.
Second.
Mr. Daley.
Aye.
Mr. Macedonio.
Aye.
Mr. Tudhill.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Ms. Kern.
Aye.
Chivatsai. Okay. And I believe, did I previously swear you in?
No.
No, okay. So if you can state your name and address, please.
Tyler Rochan and Consultants, 1319 North Sea Road, Southampton.
And do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, or nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thank you. If you can give us an update.
So do you have any questions? I don't know if anything much has gone on here.
Yeah, I mean, I do remember the, you know, the prior public hearing. So, you know, it was an unusual application, as applications go before us. Now the SECRE is resolved pretty much at this point, we, I guess, have to go through, you know, that process and then come back to us.
I spoke to Susanna Herman today. This is her new associate, by the way.
Yes. Hello. Nice to meet you all.
Supposed to beat them up a little bit.
Nice to meet you as well. Oh, really?
What are you thinking of proposing?
So you'll just want to know that similar to the last application, it's going to be my recommendation, I think, so we could work out the SECRE review of the planning board.
In other words, June, first meeting in June?
I think it probably, it's a much simpler application.
It is a much simpler application. But on that one, we only had a work session. We never got any type of form. So we have no application before us or even a submission.
Really?
But, you know, let's do the second meeting in May. Let's do that so I could.
Okay. Second meeting, May is May 19th.
Nineteenth.
Okay.
Hold on a second.
Okay. But before, before we do that, I just want to ask, well, are there any other questions? Is there anyone from the public who is waiting to be heard this evening in connection with the application of Kim R. Lester for property located at 17 Allenson Lane in Hampton Bays? Okay. If not, this one's also mine, and so I would move that we adjourn the application for all purposes until our May 19th meeting.
Second.
Mr. Tudhill.
Aye.
Mr. Macedonio.
Aye.
Mr. Daley.
Aye.
Ms. Kern.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Chivatsai, thank you for being here.
Thank you.
And good luck on the new position.
Thank you very much.
Susanna's great, so I'm sure you'll have a good experience.
It won't be so nice to you next time.
Second call, 12. Item 12 on the agenda, which is Dilip Patel and the other guy.
You can have a seat.
Thank you.
Okay. Good evening.
Good evening.
I think I previously swore you, I know I swore you in. I swear you in as well previously. Okay, that's all good. So maybe you can just state your names and give us an update.
Okay, my name is Mark Schiffer with Schiffer Engineering. We designed this little addition for the Patel family. It's a house that presently they only have three bedrooms, and they're looking to add a fourth bedroom and make a little addition on the side of the house. The property is about one acre, and the property has a very large pond on it. And there is only, only about 12,000 square feet of the property that's usable. So that's why they're asking, it's a beautiful property that's right on the water, on the Pecanic Bay, and they're asking for a five-foot relief on the setback to be able to create this additional bedroom, this additional space on the side. So it's only a five-foot additional than what's allowed, and there's a very small, the minimus infringement onto the pyramid law, into the pyramid.
Have the plans changed from the conservation board?
No.
Have you gotten a permit from the conservation board?
The issue, the issue is that, you know, there is, we went to the building department. There was a, there's a, they said there was a trellis that apparently had been done forever that had not been permitted. So we filed a worked-on permit at the building department. The building department says, well, you can't issue the permit until you get conservation approval. And we went to conservation approval. The conservation then flagged the wetlands. There are no, the only wetlands are right at the edge of the pond, and we still, but we still didn't get the.
Yeah. And I think that's why we ended up adjourning it was.
Right, exactly.
To do with that issue.
Right. But I was wondering whether it was possible, whether the process would allow you to look at the variance, review it, and possibly grant it with a condition that we would, of course, meet all, any requirements from conservation or, because in this case, it doesn't, we are not in, we're not impacting the wetlands. We are within 200 feet of the pond.
Yeah. I mean, if we get a submittal, and maybe we did get something, I'm not sure, but, but if we get a submittal from conservation, the conservation board, that they don't have any concerns with the application, that's one thing. If on the other hand, you need relief from them.
No, we don't really need relief.
Okay. Well, if you needed relief from them, the concern would be that, you know, that the application may change because of that.
I mean, in this case, we don't, we are not, you know, we are within the 200 feet of the pond, but that's one.
You are, or you aren't?
Sorry?
You are, or you?
We are.
You are, so you need something from them.
Yeah, we need, we need.
It's been a lot of not jurisdiction or something.
Or, or at least an application in to conservation board.
But I thought you've been talking to them.
We've been talking to them. It's been.
What'd they say?
Well, they went, they flagged the wetlands, then, then, it takes forever.
But you also indicated you didn't think that you needed relief from them.
No, we don't need relief because they flagged the wetlands and marked up the wetlands.
But they have jurisdiction.
They have jurisdiction. There's no question about it.
So normally we would get something from them.
No, no, I understand. They are over, you know, overworked, and it's been a long, long time.
Okay.
So the client is really putting us a lot of pressure.
Well, if you think, if you're pretty confident that you don't think that you're going to need any relief from them, and we're going to get basically something from conservation board that indicates that.
We can, Candace and I can follow up with conservation board. I'll just say, you know, we made this referral to, because, you know, we did get something from them back in October. It's been a while.
Yeah.
But I, you know.
They wanted to flag the wetlands. It took them like three months to flag the wetlands. There was no wetlands, only the pond. We are, there's no question.
Yeah, yeah. No, the only, the reason these things come up is because sometimes people need, you know, relief for, you know, related to wherever the wetlands are located from conservation board, which could change the entire application. That's, that's the reason. So it sounds to me like that's not the case. So we can accept the written sub from conservation board, and then we'll be able to render a decision.
But I have a question because we did, I don't have this application in front of me, but we wrote this up for a setback of 24.9 where 40.5 is existing, but you just said five feet. So is it, is, what's a setback, I guess is my question, if you think it's just five feet?
No, it's five feet less than what is required.
Well, 40.5 is existing, and you're asking, this says 24.9. That's why I asked if the project's changed.
And it says 40.5 existing to 24.9.
Didn't bring the plans.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, if you thought it was 30.
No, I think it was, I think it was 20, and we have 15.
Okay.
Because we have written for a principal total side. Maybe you're just thinking one side.
No, that's on one side. I'm only thinking one.
Yeah, that's probably one. We're not adding both sides.
Right, exactly. So it is, the setback on that side should be 20 feet, and we're asking for 15 feet.
Wait a second.
That's not what it was advertised for. So we have, and this is for total side, well, hold on, total side yard setback, which means you have to add them both. So maybe it's 15 feet on one side and then another little less than 10 on the other.
It's 9.9.
Okay, that's what it is.
But the 9.9 on that side is existing.
Yeah.
I don't dispute it, but when you gave me the number, I just was concerned that something had changed.
Yeah, we missed something.
Yeah, I mean, listen, we, we can close it for written submissions, but if something, you know, if Marty changes something for you.
That's right. If we get something back from conservation board saying you need to apply for something.
No, it's not going to happen.
Okay, okay, then we'd have to.
You can close for written submission.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, but you won't get a decision until we hear something definitive from conservation board that says that they love it.
Okay, that's fair. But let's close it for, at least for it.
Okay.
But I do have a question. Did this house receive a variance previously in order for this to be built as it is now?
I believe so, yes.
Definitely.
I believe so.
I remember the names.
So we're like double dipping here again, you know, with a variance on top of a variance with, I mean, which I don't like, but.
Yeah.
How new was the house?
It's not this owner. This owner bought it. The house is maybe 20 years old.
So it was not your house?
No.
Are these, are these the old variances from way back 1981 and 1966? So they're double dipping 40-something years later. So originally, there was a, well, there was a 1966 decision granted, granting with variance of 85 feet to divide the property into two single separate lots way back when. And then a 1981 decision granting division of the property pursuant to a survey, according to a survey dated 1/20/81, parcel one to have 20,000 square feet, parcel two, 46,500. So this is really, back in those days, it was, we acted like we were the planning board.
Or it was like a single and separate determination.
Yeah, yeah. So, so this is really about the creation of the parcel model that was being built on there. So I don't necessarily see it exactly the same way, at least in this instance.
I was just asking, I mean, because, you know, this is, these houses are all kind of big and close together down here.
Yep.
Anyway, but now we're just giving, you know, they're getting that much bigger and that much closer, so.
Yeah.
If the neighbors aren't here complaining, then.
No, actually, we have, we have a letter of support of that neighbor that's on those things.
Yeah, yeah.
But there is another neighbor that has concerns. There's, we got something from Bill Leeds or something like.
Right. There, there, it's somebody who's not, he's on, he's on the other side of the pond, on the front, and he thinks that, you know, there may be an issue with the view.
So it's not an abutting?
No. Well, it is abutting to the south, to the southeast.
Oh, south, because of the pond.
To the southeast. It's the person here on the other side of the pond.
Yes.
See, the pond is this big area right here, and it's a person who's that far out.
Yeah. And for what it's worth, you have, you have limitations on this lot, significant limitations on this lot, number one. Number two, the amount of relief that you're requesting between the pyramid relief and the setback relief, you know, is minor.
Yes.
Is minor in the scheme of things in terms of the impact on the neighbors. So it's not that, you know, I think we had an issue with the application, the underlying relief in the application as much as we have to send the conservation board first because we don't know whether you, we're going to need relief from them, and if so, whether that would change the relief you were requesting from us. So, but it's, it is, you know, minor relief.
The only question from the conservation board would be whether the septic system, the existing septic system, should be replaced with an IA system.
Right.
Now, does this septic system, the existing septic system, is good for four bedroom?
Mm-hmm.
So theoretically, if we want, the health department would not require us to do it.
Okay.
As an engineer, I feel that it would be a tremendous disturbance to remove the existing septic system and install a new IA system at that same location. But if the conservation board feel that it should be done, then we'll do it. But right now, it's sized for the four bedroom.
Yep. And that's all, you know, out of, out of our hands, that part of it.
Right, exactly. So it's not, that would be the only comment from conservation would be in a connection with the septic system.
Okay. And as long as that doesn't change the underlying relief that you're requesting, which it won't, if that's what they tell us, that's fine. Yeah. Okay. All right. Any other questions, members of the board?
No.
Is there anyone from the public who would like to be heard in connection with the application of Patel and Dhillon for property located at 147 Edgemere Drive in North Sea? If not, I have a lead on this one, too. Okay. So I would move that we close the application except for written submissions. Written submissions, do we want to give extra time because you're waiting for something from conservation board?
You might want to.
I don't know, I don't know if April 22nd is long enough. I'll do it for April 22nd.
Yeah, please.
And if you need more time, just let Candace know.
Okay, fine.
And then we'll extend it. So anyway, so I'll make the motion that we close except for written submissions by April 22nd, decision May 5th.
Second.
Okay. Mr. Daley.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Ms. Kern.
Aye.
Mr. Macedonio.
Aye.
Mr. Tudhill.
Aye.
Chivatsai, thank you both for being here.
Okay, thank you very much.
Have good rest of your night. Oh, thanks.
Thank you so much. Have a good work.
Thanks.
Appreciate it.
No problem.
Okay, 14, item 14. Robert Raphael, 639 Dune Road in West Hampton, Suffolk County Tax Map, 900-391-2-28. This is a modification request, so, you know.
You gotta read it.
On March 4, 2021, by decision number D021020, this board granted variance relief for the construction of a pool fence and a second-floor deck lampyard of the crest of the dune. A written submission was received by this board on February 24, 2002, requesting that ZBA decision D021020 be modified to include any and all necessary variance relief for a proposed barbecue with outdoor kitchen. Variance relief from the following provision of town code are required for said barbecue with outdoor kitchen. 330-46.2B1, adjacent areas to allow the barbecue with outdoor kitchen to be located 100 feet plus and minus from the crest of the dune, where a setback of 125 feet is required. Two, 330-11 Residential District Stable Dimension Regulations for an accessory side yard setback of 10.45 feet, where 20 feet is required, and 330-76 Placement, placement of accessory building structure, structures and uses in all districts and 330-83C yards to allow the barbecue with outdoor kitchen to be located within the minimum and total side yard for the principal building.
Could I have the affidavit?
Yes. Good evening.
Hold on one sec.
I kept it in there because it was raining. I didn't want to.
Nope, that's perfect. The board has jurisdiction.
And I just have to swear you in unless you're attorney.
I am.
Attorney.
I am as well.
Okay.
Good evening.
I'll tell you when you're ready.
I just wanted to say something first.
Mr. Wilson, you, Pam Turner would like to say something.
I just wanted to say something first because I have worked with the Raffaels about this. After this decision was granted, they had reached out because they, on the survey that they had submitted to the ZBA when we heard this, there was an outdoor barbecue area. And so they had said, I think we need variances for this. Can we just amend the decision? And I had listened to the hearing, and we didn't talk about it, but it was on the survey. So that's why we had said to them, just post it and mail it and then put the setbacks on it. So I'm hoping you have a survey with setbacks on it, and then we'll discuss it with the board.
I believe the survey was submitted. Good evening. My name is Alan Mendel. Address 89 Meadowwoods Road, Breitneck, New York, 11020. I'm peering this evening on behalf of Robert and Michelle Raphael for their home. As indicated, there was a decision on March 4, 2021 for a variance, and that original, that original site plan and survey did indicate the barbecue area that we're discussing this evening, but it was not marked as proposed. There was definitely some correspondence and review of town people that discussed the barbecue area and mentioned that it was a structure, and as a structure, it would require a variance, but it did not make it to the decision. In consultation with Candace, who's been a tremendous help, and I'm sure everyone here recognizes that.
Yep.
The Raffaels thought it best to follow advice given, and we thought it best to come before you. As you see, the mailing was given to all residents, so notification was given again. And we are here for that portion, for that modification of the decision. I would tell you that there is, of course, has been mentioned here today for other applications, it should be a five-part test.
Yes.
This, this small barbecue area of six feet does not change really the character, in our opinion, of the area. It is not, it is not a detriment to the neighbors. The relief sought cannot recur without a variance granted by this board. We are within the coastal erosion hazard line, so anything that we do here would be subject to a variance, no matter where we put it, is not substantial in nature. The barbecue standing on its own is not much smaller than what we're asking for, but because it's a rolling barbecue, it does not count as a structure. And there, it is on a portion of the plan where it is already going to be a patio, but I believe it's an earth, so there's no environmental impact of it, and it has not been built. So this isn't a self-created problem. We didn't do anything without permit. Nothing has been done to the site until action of this board is taken, with full respect to your jurisdiction. So with that, we're here to answer any questions, and we thank you for hearing us this evening.
These folks are here to do the right thing and to make sure that they have relief for everything that was, you know, previously proposed. So to me, you're, I appreciate.
But wasn't previously proposed.
Well, that is, it was, it was on the survey. It was, it was on the survey.
It was shown, but it wasn't proposed.
And it wasn't addressed in the prior application.
You mentioned there was some discussion.
It was discussed in the area. I think, I don't know if it is beneficial for us to go through that to a certain extent. It was, appeared, it really was discussed, but.
It was discussed, and I.
I don't want to argue that point.
I had a neighbor, I had a neighbor on the other side who, I had six meetings with you guys, and he was all for anything that happened on the other side, but his side, he didn't want to see people. So originally, it was discussed.
And I remember the application.
Yeah.
I wasn't here, so.
Right. Well, we thank you for your time this evening. We hope we, based on the merits of the matter.
We were professional barbecue eaters. And I saw you shot down.
But what is the setback?
I saw you shot down the guy with the professional tennis player.
What's the setback?
We chose a different direction.
Okay, yeah, good, good. Well.
Let me see if I see that.
Bring your magazine with you as the barbecue king.
I would be number two at like top two.
Any questions? Is there anyone from the public who is waiting to be heard in connection with the application of Raphael for 639 Dune Road in West Hampton? Okay. Cornelius, if not.
I'm waiting to hear what the setback.
I apologize. I'm not sure if I, I see where the setback is. I can tell you where the crest of the dune is marked on it, and I can tell you where
the crest of the dune is marked on it, and I can tell you where the fence line is, I can't tell you where that setback lies.
Well, you know, that's, I mean, that's, we've talked about it all along, like, we need to know what the setback is. I mean, it's, you know, the survey should be revised to show the setback, so we just need to hear the setback.
As, I apologize, it was my understanding that the only thing needed is to change how it was listed, the actual barbecue itself. Let me see.
Looking for the measurements?
Just the crest of the dune one.
Okay.
Oh, the crest of the dune is marked.
I want to know what the setback is from the barbecue.
Tonight, may I approach, because I don't want to give you the wrong information, I brought the survey and survey and have you. So here's the crest marked out, and here are the measurements of it.
Great, but see how this.
And here's the distance, which is 78.10 from that pool line.
Okay, but where's the barbecue?
And the barbecue is located here.
Right, so I need the setback from the barbecue to the crest of the dune.
Probably in the pool.
So.
I'm sure it's not on there, because the building department said.
I actually can give it to you, because as you see, this is dimensioned here.
I need it on, I need it on the survey, like, where this, like, I need it on the survey.
So since, if we could close the meeting now.
Yeah, written submission.
We will mark that out.
Yep.
That's all, just submit a revise.
You'll have until April 22nd to submit that.
Yep.
And then.
I think you'll get it before Monday.
Not, not drawn out of hand by the survey.
We also, we also do this, I'm a judge, yeah, I'm a judge, and we're both, we're on the planning board, can we approve this pending, giving this to you and send it in now?
That's what we did.
No, not.
They didn't approve it, but is that going to close later?
What happens is, we close the public hearings, we give people an opportunity, including people who are neighbors, to submit things in writing. So, so what we do is, we close the written subs, we give people in the, basically anyone who's, who may be concerned about it sometime, if they, if they want to, submit something in writing to us, and then we render a decision.
How long, can I, I mean.
Well, and if, and we really started doing this more since COVID, so if your original application was, you know, some time ago, we probably weren't doing that.
I think my original application was four years on this.
Okay, okay.
So, your decision will be given on May 5?
May 5, May 5.
So when you, and how soon after did they grant, can I get, can I, would I be able to obtain a permit?
You have to file after that.
Yeah, you have to file after that, the, the, the actual decision will be available the Monday following the meeting.
Since one was approved, is it a second permit that I would be getting, or would I be getting one permit, or would I be getting two?
One permit.
Because they, okay, because they have, it's not a separate permit that would.
I don't believe so, but.
Because I have the approval on the first, I was wondering if I could start.
And I don't want to speak for the building department, so.
But you were approved before.
Right.
It's on your, you're allowed to do, but this is going to be a separate approval.
That's what I'm asking.
That will combine in the same permit.
No, it's not.
Well, do you already have it?
Same one building permit.
We have the ability to get the existing permit, because.
You're not yet.
Right. They would not approve it.
No, they would approve it.
With that, only if we remove the barbecue.
What? But can I start on that job?
I would think so.
If you want to get that permit.
I would get as two separate.
You can start on the job once, once you get the permit, so.
I can start on the first one.
I think we should just, let's just.
Yeah, whatever the building department.
Hold on, because the building department put me here, because they told, they gave me a, if you remember.
Yeah, but, but we can't substitute ourselves for the building department as to, as to exactly, when building permits issue, how.
Can I, can I start the original job, and this is a modification, just add it as it comes in?
Do you have a building permit issued for anything?
I, we went for it, and they said you could have.
If you don't have a building permit, you can't start anything.
No, no, I understand I have to get the building permit, that takes me, that'll take me a very short amount of time at this point.
You could apply for a building permit, for whatever you have approval for.
Or you can combine the permit.
Until you have a resolution from this board, you cannot apply to the building department for that, for that.
For the barbecue.
Correct, so can I start the other job and have, and have a separate building permit for that, that's what I'm asking.
You can apply for building permits however you want.
You'd have to apply for two permits, or if you get this decision, you can apply before then, you do it all at once.
Right, so I can, I can, the choice I can do.
But you'd have to file the drawing twice.
I can apply for two building permits with them, yes? Okay.
That's your choice.
We think so.
That's the choice. But let's, I mean.
This is harder, like, with the building department approving, telling me I can do something, and then, you know, my neighbor said, well, why'd you do that? And then they made me come back and, you know.
Yeah, okay. Check with them.
Well, at least you didn't do it and then come.
Right, no, 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 no.
I originally did what the building department told me to do, then they told me to take everything down, which is.
No, you're here, you're here to do the right thing.
Right.
And we appreciate that.
We didn't get the 6120 tennis court, and then he came to it.
Right. If that guy would have approved that, we were going to hire him.
I liked it when they built the house six feet, when they had the whole house.
But if that guy would have gotten that approved, that guy, you know.
It was a, it was a.
I would move ahead with the public hearing, leaving out the written submissions until April 22nd.
Yeah, if that would have been, that would have been something.
With a written decision on May 5.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, everybody.
Thank you both.
So clear, I'm fine with it, though, okay?
Thank you, we're good, yes, thank you.
I appreciate it very much.
No problem.
Second.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Ms. Kern.
Aye.
Mr. Tuthill.
Aye.
Mr. Macedonia.
Aye.
Mr. Daly.
Aye.
Chair of the time. No problem.
Thank you very much for your time and your support, very much.
Thanks.
Two attorneys and two board members, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
In a different pond.
Yeah, okay, so I have an amended decision?
Yes.
Yes, he did.
Kenneth Seeth and Nicole Coolseeth.
Okay, so I have an amended decision in the application of Kenneth Seeth and Nicole Coolseeth, this is for property located at Suffolk County Tax Map Number 97236. I had written the decision, so I had a correction that needed to be made. On March 3, 2022, by decision number D022023, this board granted relief to allow the conversion of the current primary residence into an accessory building and to allow the conversion of the one and a half story building into a single-family residence. In addition, this board found that the proposed accessory building is a subordinate or incidental building pursuant to town code 335. This decision, however, did not refer to the correct survey date, therefore, decision number D022023 is hereby amended to refer to the survey prepared by Gary Van Surveyor dated December 21, 2017, last revised December 7, 2021. All other provisions of decision number D022023 remain in full force and effect.
Second.
Mr. Daly.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Ms. Kern.
Aye.
Mr. Macedonia.
Steve.
Mr. Tuthill.
Aye.
Chair of the time. I have an application, a decision, in the application of Timothy Shannon and Marieth Meneloz for property located at Suffolk County Tax Map Number 962130.1. This application is for property located at 85 Waters Edge Road, North Sea. The applicant seeks variances in connection with a proposed swimming pool and garage slash pool house. The premises is non-conforming, burdened by wetlands, a drainage easement, and two front yards. The application passes the standards set forth in New York State Town Law and the Southampton Town Code. Therefore, this board grants relief to the applicant, applicants from the following provisions of town code for a proposed 40.6 by 18-foot in-ground swimming pool. One, 330-11 Residential Districts Table of Dimensional Regulations for an accessory side yard setback of 10.4 feet where 20 feet is required. And two, town code 330-76D, placement of accessory building structures and uses in all districts, and town code 330-83C yards to allow the swimming pool to be located within the required minimum side yard for the principal building. And two, for a proposed garage slash pool house, relief from town code 330-11 for an accessory side yard setback of 12 feet where 20 feet is required. These variances are granted for structures as shown on the survey prepared by Michael K. Wicks, last revised April 1, 2022, and the plans prepared by McBride Architects, last revised April 4, 2022. The granting of this relief is subject to such other conditions and permits as applicant has already acquired or may otherwise have to acquire for final approval of the subject premises, including providing screening of the proposed pool and garage slash pool house from the adjacent property on the north.
Second.
Ms. Kern.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.